Would like to call to order a city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for February the 10th, 2020. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would clerk please poll the councilor? Would you actually, would you call the role of the members? We're not polling the council, we'll call them the role of the members.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Hoppe?
Present.
Mr. Stites?
Present.
Ms. Saltine?
Present.
Ms. Dozeman?
Here.
Ms. Nosler Beck?
I made it.
You did. Mr. Mayor, all members of the council are present.
Thank you. Councilors, before you have, you have council minutes of December 9th, 2019, the council minutes of January 27, 2020, and special study session notes of January 27, 2020. Do we have any modifications, Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to note on council minutes, December 9th, 2019, under citizens' right to speak, Chris Chidley is in fact a he, so if we could change the three she's to he's in those minutes. And then in the council minutes for January 27, 2020, under item number three, the motion was made by myself, Hoppe, but it was seconded by council member Stites.
Did you?
We shall make those corrections in the official copy.
Thank you. There being no further corrections, we will let the minutes stand at, oh, Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. And I also talked to Robin and Steve. They had misspelled my name a couple times incorrectly, so that got corrected, I think. Thanks.
So with those corrections, we will let the minutes stand. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move with the agenda as published. We are now at our citizens' right to speak. Citizens who may wish may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. When I call your name, if you would come to the podium and adjust the microphone so it's comfortable to speak into, give us your name, first name and last name, spell your last name for us, and give us your address. And at the end of that, our clerk will hit this timer button and you'll have three minutes. And I'm also going to, we have a special study session after our city council meeting, and in accordance with the rules, we will have comment on items on the study session at that, after our citizens' right to speak on, on non-agenda items, we'll go into study session comments. So our first speaker is Kim James.
These are agenda items.
Oh, these are agenda, you're speaking on the agenda items for item number one, for the sober living, and that's, that will come up under our public hearing, and so I'll call you up later when that, when that comes up. We're on items now that are not on the agenda. So I don't have anyone signed up to speak on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here who is not signed up who would like to speak at this time? All right, we don't have anyone to speak, so we will continue on with our meeting. And that brings us to the, well, we don't have, we don't have anything on a consent agenda item, so we are at a public hearing. Oh, this is the minute. Yeah, well, we will talk on, thank you. Mayor Protim is reminding me that we will have comment on study session items, and Mr. Guy Namiash is here to speak on study session item number one. If you'd like to come to the podium now.
Guy Namiash, 3650 Ward Road, Wheat Ridge. Just a quick note about snowplows, snow clearing. On my block, we have a nice little agreement with our city treasurer with his nifty new snowblower, that we clear the sidewalks, and we use shovels, his snowblower, and we're nice, and until the city plow comes along and covers our sidewalks, and then we go out there and clean again, and the snowplow comes back, and it gets a little frustrating to a point where we're thinking, we're gonna wait until the last snowflake, no political remark, the last snowflake falls down, and, and then we'll get to it. But in the meantime, we have a lot of seniors on our block that are trying to get to King Supers and, and the Bus on 38, so we would love it if the plows came up and down and cleared as they should, but then if they're blocking our sidewalks, that somebody from the city comes back and cleans the sidewalks. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I have no one else assigned to speak on the special study session. Is there anyone who hasn't signed up who would like to speak at this time? Okay, we will finish with our study session public comment. Now, we will go to public hearings and ordinance on second reading, item number one, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council bill number 02-2020, an ordinance amending chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning residential group home and substance abuse clinic zoning requirements. At issue, the zoning code currently regulates a variety of non-traditional residential living arrangements, including group homes for the elderly and children, as well as treatment clinics. The code fails, however, to recognize certain types of arrangements, including group homes for disabled persons. The enclosed ordinance eliminates distinctions that no longer have a meaningful land use planning purpose, and impose neutral, nondiscriminatory zoning regulations upon residential group homes for disabled persons.
Thank you. This is a public hearing for an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi-judicial. It is ordinance number 1684, and I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Our city attorney, Mr. Dahl, will do the presentation.
Mr. Dahl.
Thank you very much. Counsel, you have seen this item at study session a couple of times, and I'll shorten my presentation just a little, but I do understand this is the first time there's been a public hearing, and it's broadcast, and I know that your constituents are interested in this, and so you'll forgive me for covering some material that you're already pretty familiar with, but it's important to lay a predicate for the, for the kind of regulation that's being proposed here. This regulation emanates from the federal Congress adoption of the Fair Housing Act amendments in 1988. And as I previously told you, those amendments declare that there shall not be discrimination of the disabled in government programs. And as I've described to you previously, it's, it's not intuitive to think about a zoning program of a, of a local government such as the city of Wheat Ridge as a government program. We think of other programs that provide aid or whatever, but the courts are clear that that one of the programs the city provides is, is zoning and determining where appropriate uses are allowed to be, and where uses shouldn't be in order to protect the general public health, safety, and welfare. And it's an important program, and some of the more controversial actions you overtake are around land use, as you're more than well aware. And so the Fair Housing Act amendments do apply to the zoning program that the city has in place. And, and the key, one of the key definitions, of course, is a disability. There can't be discrimination in your zoning program with respect to the disabled. And the disabled under federal and state law includes the categories we're all familiar with, developmental, developmental disability, et cetera, but also includes, in the case law and the, the federal regulations are clear, to, that it includes drug and alcohol rehabilitation. That is, persons suffering from drug and alcohol addiction but not presently using. And that is one of the key drivers, I will say, of ordinances like this because of sober homes that are asked to locate in residential areas of, of the country, and also here in Wheat Ridge. But however, the law clearly does apply to those individuals that are wanting to live in a group home setting. This ordinance largely deals with those kinds of group home settings, and what the city can do and what the city can't do. And I think it's probably fair to say that after a lot of work, the city is charting a course here that I think is a good balance between approaches that are more severe, that have been undertaken in other municipalities, and the approach that the city has now, which is a fairly permissive approach. Throughout, it has been my goal to make certain that whatever the city did here, it complied with the federal law and the intent and spirit of that law, while at the same time recognizing to the greatest degree possible the kinds of things that the city can reasonably do for the protection of the residents of those homes, as well as residents throughout the city. The city had, prior to 1996, a regulation on group homes, which was clearly out of compliance with the federal law. It allowed one group home per resident, per council district, and you had to get a conditional use permit no matter the size of the home, and that would have been clearly in violation of the federal statute. So to the council's credit, in 1996 and 1997, the council amended the zoning code in the way that you see it now. It has stayed that way for, for, you know, more than 20 years now. And the council at that time did a sort of, well, called kind of a quick fix by adjusting the definition of family to include any number of, of disabled or handicapped individuals living in a congregant care situation, and the other necessary persons involved in the care of those persons. And that's sort of a simple and short way to address the group home issue, and what that meant was that group homes for the disabled could locate in any residential district where families were allowed as a use by right, which are most of the, all of the residential zone districts in the city. And that system was one that a number of other cities embraced, and so Wheat Ridge was not alone in, in doing that. And that served the city for, for quite some time, but in 2012, there was interest in amending the ordinance. Nothing really happened, and so now we're up to the present time. And the ordinance that's in front of you here does a number of things to kind of comprehensively address group homes, not only for the disabled as required by the federal law, but the, the group home regime in the city generally, because the city is allowed and has for many years regulated other types of group homes, for the elderly, for children, other congregant care arrangements, and sort of, kind of a while we are at it, but more accurately, if you're gonna make the changes, it made sense to have a good thorough look at how group homes generally are treated in the city. This ordinance does that, and at the same time, continues to make the city be in compliance with the, with federal law. And I want to make a few points about the specific ordinance itself. And that's in your council action form, and I'll hit some of the, some of the high points. To begin with, we're adding a new definition of residential group home for the disabled, and that would include persons who are handicapped or disabled and their caretakers. That allows us to move that language that used to be in the definition of family, which has been kind of our tool, our single tool for the last 20 years, and have a separate definition. We took that language then out of the family definition, no longer needed there because we now have a group home definition. This ordinance creates a regulatory scheme for all residential group homes regulated largely in the same manner. There are a few distinctions based on the type of home, as we'll see in a minute. Because group homes are now regulated in the same way, we needed to amend the land use charts to show key distinctions. And one of the most important distinctions that I know council's aware of and your constituents are aware of is the distinction between residential group homes of eight or fewer disabled persons plus needed staff are a use by right in residential zone districts. So they operate just like a regular family would, and don't need any more permissions than I would need if I was the, a member of a household of a natural family of eight persons. You don't need to get the city's permission to buy and live in a house in city in Wheat Ridge if, if you're a, a natural family related by blood or marriage. The, the categorization of group homes for the disabled in this ordinance extends that protection similarly to disabled persons of eight or fewer in number that wish to live together in a congregant setting. That's a significant change, and it's a significant number, and this is debated for quite a while, as you, as you know. I will say that, as I have told you, the case law across the country, and well, how many is too many? And how much is, at what number can you start regulating in a way that's different than regulating my, my example family of eight natural persons? Different communities have chosen different breakpoints. There's no uniform federal law around this, and some numbers that are higher have been permitted, and some lowers, numbers lower have been thrown out. One of the main reasons that eight is the breakpoint recommended here is we've got some real cover in state law. There is a state statute that authorizes, in fact declares, that, that group homes for developmentally disabled persons at eight or fewer are a use by right in residential zone districts, and lays that requirement on all local governments in, in the state. We thought that that was a good model to follow. Frankly, when you get into double digits, I find that the case law is more supportive of saying, okay, those are, are edging from a group home situation into a, into more of an institutional situation. And that's exactly the, the demarcation that this ordinance follows, and that's why I'm spending that much time on it, is because that's, that's one of the most key and, and high-profile aspects of the ordinance. So eight or fewer, you're a family. You act and operate and are regulated in the same way a natural family would be. Nine, up to, from nine to 14, requires a conditional use permit, and that's something that is permissible at a certain level, and the number that's been chosen here, and I think it's very defensible, is nine to 14. Group homes of 15 or more aren't permitted in residential zone districts, that's really an institutional use. City clearly has the authority to move those kinds of uses out of residential areas into other areas where institutional uses are, are allowed. So that's the most important aspect of the structure here. There's some kind of conforming amendments that needed to be made throughout the zoning code to, to implement this. Amending the definition of family to take out that language, as I mentioned, because it's got its own definition now. While we're at it fixing a, an odd situation we had where, where four persons over the age of 60 living together were somehow in some kind of undefined zone. We allowed three and five, but four wasn't mentioned. We, we fixed that problem. We deleted the restriction on live-in caretakers for group homes for the elderly because we felt that the economics really, personnel costs money. It's the biggest cost of any business, and we felt that was a fairly self-limiting aspect that we didn't need to regulate. There was a distinction between substance abuse clinics for treatment of drug abuse versus alcohol abuse. We eliminated that distinction as unnecessary. There was some cross-referencing that was eliminated. The off-street parking requirements for all residential group homes below a given occupancy level were made the same. Importantly, and this took a lot of discussion at the study sessions, I was asked many times, well, even for these group homes of eight or less, can we require a business license? Because sometimes these people are renting from someone else, and it looks like a business to us, and it looks like a business to the neighbors, and we should be regulating them like a business. And my response, pretty uniformly, as you recall, was no. You don't regulate the natural family of eight persons like a business. You don't require them to get a business permit. You don't require them to tell you how many cars they get to own at that, at that location. And that's how the federal law would look at a group home of eight or fewer disabled individuals. However, I did indicate that because a group home is, is not a natural family, and it is, and allowing it as an, as a use by right in a residential zone district, you are departing from some of the expectations of the community, it's fair to make sure that the persons that are there do in fact benefit from the protection of the law. Because eight unrelated people who are not handicapped or disabled don't have the benefit of the law, and don't have the ability to, and you're not required to and don't allow them to live as a use by right in a residential zone district. So how do you know? Well, if you went to a business licensing system, you would know. As I advised you, I thought that that was too heavy-handed, and I thought that that would, among other things, attract the attention of the Department of Justice, which has issued some guidance around that, that subject. But what I did say, and what is in the ordinance, is a semi-annual certification, saying certify to us on a semi-annual basis that the persons living there are in fact handicapped or disabled. It's a self-reporting form, and council member Urban and I had quite a dialogue about that. And, and his question, which was a fair one, was, well, how do we know that we're getting the, the right information? And my response was different than often, when we're looking at these, at an ordinance, now we're all done, and I said, this is a process, not an event. And I fully expect that we may find that we need to fine-tune this ordinance a little bit. We've developed, and planning staffs have been very helpful in developing a form of, of reporting form for this semi-annual report, so that there are blanks to be filled in, but it's, it's really pretty, pretty user-friendly and intuitive, so that we don't have people struggling with, well, what exactly is the city asking for? We're making it very clear. And I think it is fair, as I mentioned to you several times, that if you're gonna benefit from the protections of the law differently than others, you, there's a reasonable expectation that you need to be able to say and document at regular intervals that, yes, in fact, the persons living there do benefit from and are entitled to protection of the statute. And so that is why that certification. The planning commission saw this ordinance, as you asked us to, to show it to them before it came to you on, on second reading, and their sole recommendation was that this semi-annual certification be made applicable to all group homes, and that was no problem for us, made applicable to all group types of group homes. And we have done that in this ordinance, and I wanted to let you know that we've done that. Finally, two last things. The ordinance provides that, yes, you've got a group home, yes, you're a use by right in a residential zone district, but that does not entitle you to be able to conduct meetings or gatherings or other kinds of activities that are not, or that are inconsistent with the activities permitted in a regular residential zone district. So for example, having meetings and inviting the public. Open AA meetings, for example, that would have a, a large number of other people that were not people living in the home. Conducting ministerial activities, religious services, having onsite medical treatment. Let's remember that the program here is zoning. The access to the program is the access to a residential setting, because, and I fully support it, a residential setting for persons recovering from drug or alcohol addiction is important to their ability to continue to recover. But what you're guaranteeing is a residential setting. You're not also saying that, that that includes a panel plea of other activities that a residential setting doesn't generally provide. And so you can draw that line, and that is a line that's drawn, interestingly also, in the state statute, saying a group home does not carry with it the entitlement to have these kinds of activities that are not something that my family of eight, my natural family of eight persons would not be conducting. And finally, we did put in the ordinance a procedure for reviewing applications for a reasonable accommodation. The federal law is very clear that, that even after you've put this whole system in place, if someone says, you know, this sort of works, but I need an accommodation in one aspect or another, you have to have a process to take that application. Not that you must always say yes, but it's, it's a form of variance. However, the city's variance code does not lend itself to the, a variance to this kind of regulation, and so I borrowed from Prescott, Arizona, who had a pretty good version of that. Prescott was recommended to us, as I think I told you before, just recently, last fall, the state of Arizona retook over regulation of group homes, and so Prescott had to repeal their ordinance, but it was a good model for a, a reasonable accommodation, and I included that. I've been aware that, that there is concern about, well, how long are we giving people to comply here, once this ordinance is effective? It's got a regular effective date, 15 days after final publication, as usual, but you'll notice the last section of the ordinance, section 14, gives six months for the, the group homes of eight and less to qualify, to come into conformance with the semi-annual reporting requirement, and a similar six months for larger group homes, if they were going to require a conditional use permit under the ordinance to come in and apply for that permit. It's not the same thing as an effective date of the ordinance that's six months out, I admit. There are other requirements in the ordinance that would be effective in 15 days. And you certainly have the right to have this, the entire ordinance take effect at a later date. The charter allows you to adjust the effective date as you wish. But on that point, I wanted to make clear that, that we're aware of the fact that when you do a zoning, kind of zoning law change, that's gonna affect people presently, especially if there's some compliance requirements, the semi-annual certification if you're eight or less, the conditional use permit if you're nine or more, that that doesn't happen overnight, and you've got to have time to be made aware of the ordinance to begin with, and then educate yourself about it, and pull together whatever forms need to be filed. So we have made that provision in section 14. I really appreciate your patience in listening to me for probably the third time on this, but it's a, it's a landscape that is involved, and I know you're very familiar with it, but it's, it's something you will get questions on, and as I have indicated, it's more a process than an event. I'm sure there will be some tweaks, but I think this, this takes the city a very long way toward pretty substantial compliance with, with the law. Pleased to be answering questions.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open the, the dialogue up to comments from the public, and I have two people that are set, that are signed up to speak. Our first speaker is Kim James. Now you can come up, and if you would give us your first name and last name, spell your last name, give us your address. You may speak after that. And Mr. Clerk, we are not timing these.
My name is Kim James, J-A-M-E-S, and I live at 12063 West 31st Place. It is my understanding you all are voting on the residential group home limitations this evening. I am here as a direct neighbor to the sober home living on 31st Place here in Wheat Ridge. An anonymous author wrote, "Addiction has no boundaries. Addiction does not discriminate. It is a disease, but a treatable disease. As I extend compassion and understanding to the men and women that are forced to find refuge and healing in sober living homes, I also feel it is essential to stand up for what I feel is best for them, as well as their neighbors. The Society of Psychological Addictive Behaviors have found that the risk of relapse is at its highest in the first 90 days of sobriety. Because of this evidence-based research, I ask that you limit the number of residents in the sober living homes here in Wheat Ridge. I believe that the algorithm that these men and women follow are a direct admission, inpatient admission to a treatment center, then discharged to a sober living home." to a sober living home for a 60 to 90 day treatment plan. At that time, they arrive to the sober home, their lives are at its peak vulnerability and need for healing. I fear with the number of residents greater than eight, their safety, sobriety, and a place of genuine healing can be affected. Second, I ask you stand up for the homeowners being affected by the parking on the street. At this time, our block has anywhere from nine to 12 cars parked along the streets. I have brought some photos this evening for you guys to view that really reflects the challenge of what we are facing. We, as neighbors, are happy to accommodate one another with our parking needs, but I feel that nine to 12 cars, our, the safety of our children and elderly becomes compromised. And as the city attorney mentioned, it doesn't promote the safety for the residents in our city. As you can see in photo number one, there's a blind spot created around the corner with so many cars parked. There's a blind spot that ends up being created where cars coming around would have no idea that there could be children playing in the street, or elderly crossing the road. Meetings are occurring on Sundays where outside guests are coming into the house for the meetings, which is creating all the more parking concerns. I ask that this issue to be addressed in your vote. Lastly, sober living homes and their issues are becoming a hot topic and issue nationwide. The New York Times recently revealed addiction treatment homes and centers bring in over $35 million a year. Time Magazine had an article that addresses the lack of regulation with these homes and the unfortunate insurance fraud that sometimes comes with sober living homes. I ask that the city of Wheat Ridge please start the regulation process in our own city so that the sober homes can be truly a place of sobriety and healing. If you want to see these pictures.
Thank you. If you'd like to give those to the clerk, he'll pass those forward to us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Truda Mordo, Mordo?
Moreau.
Moreau, I'm sorry, I didn't.
My name is Truda Moreau, and it's spelled M.O.R.E.A.U. I live at 3101 Union Street, which is the way Wheat Ridge is configured. My kitchen faces straight on to the front door of this sober living home. So I get to see comings and goings all day long. And we appreciate your help on this matter, of all of the regulations that you can put forth to help us deal with this situation. It just came in in the middle of the night, basically took us completely blindsided for an R1 neighborhood. We're thinking we're quite secure in having a very nice neighborhood, and suddenly we have increased traffic and all kinds of things going on, and it's been a bit of a challenge. So judging from what we have observed, and personally, I feel this is not much more than a lucrative boarding house with the comings and goings that are going on. There's a lot of out-of-state cars that are showing up here and there. And I think it has completely destroyed the character of our R1 neighborhood. So what you can come up with for us as homeowners, I think would be most welcome. And we appreciate your time and effort on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
That's all of the speakers that I have signed up to speak on this matter. Is there anyone here who hasn't signed up who would like to speak? All right, we will close our public comment and open the floor up to questions from council. Ms. Nosler back.
Thanks. So Jerry, you're right, we've gone over this a few times. And I think we did a lot of thinking through the impacts on residents and neighborhoods. And I'm hopeful that the licensing will be a tool for neighbors to, you know, work with the city instead of having to work directly with their neighbor if, if it's a sober living home. But I'm, I'm concerned that we may have not done some outreach to people who are operating the sober living homes, and also just even the residents who are there. I just, I, I had talked to Patrick about this a little bit, too, but I want to make sure that we're doing appropriate outreach to everybody involved, because I think that the, the licensing on their end, too, could be really beneficial as well. So if you could just let me know.
Sure, I can, I can address that. And I know that when you said licensing, you meant certification.
I meant certification.
Very good, thank you.
Sorry.
I, I knew that. I'm glad you mentioned this, and in part, that's why I pointed out that the ordinance as presently structured has this six-month time period for the two kind of paperwork processing requirements that, that emanate from, from the ordinance. The semi-annual certification and the conditional use permit, if you're nine or up. And clearly, the city will need to reach out to, to all group homes of which it is aware, to say, this ordinance has been adopted, assuming it is. And there's a timeframe here. It, that timeframe will impose this particular requirement on you in six months. Here's a copy of the form. Here's, if you're more than nine, here's the information on applying for a conditional use permit. Here's a copy of the ordinance. Please come talk to us, would be, and I don't mean to commit Ken Johnstone, but that would be something I think the city will need to do, and probably has done for other kinds of regulatory programs.
Is there anything you want to add to that?
We'll certainly do our best to do that. I think the challenge is, because we have not certified these in the past, we don't know probably where the majority of them exist. We know of a, of a handful, two or three that I can think of, and we can certainly reach out to those. But we really don't, because we haven't regulated them anyway, we just don't kind of know, there's not a clearinghouse list of, of who these folks are. So we'll, I'm sure we'll, we'll learn that in a, you know, interesting ways from, from neighborhoods that are aware of this, that, that will help, in fact, let us know where ones are, so that we can make sure they do get the certification done.
And that's basically how we know where these homes are now, is just
Sure.
word of mouth.
Yep.
If someone has a parking issue or traffic issues.
Yep. Yeah, I think our, you know, our code enforcement team probably has, knows of a handful of them, and will reach out to them just from, you know, parking issues or other issues that have come up over the years.
And does Jerry, like, can you just kind of reiterate how the, what we've done with the parking, how that fixes the, the parking issue?
Sure.
Just for folks who came in for public comment.
Yeah, and I'd appreciate Ken's help on this, too, Ken, if I get it wrong at all. I think it's on page seven of the, of the ordinance, paragraph four. Group homes with nine or more residents need especially a, a conditional use permit. That permit, it says, shall require in addition to other conditions, facility comply with the parking standards of, of the code. Commercial components, such as parking lots and playgrounds, have to be screened and buffered. And the city may require a trip generation study, primarily with respect to any condition is in a, in a conditional use permit. We haven't imposed, unless Ken's going to tell, tell me something different, parking requirements that are special to group homes of eight or fewer, any different than parking requirements that we would impose on any other residents in that zone district. Is that right?
That's correct. Well, with, with one exception, which is we require parking for the maximum number of, of employees on the maximum shift for the group home. So if they have employees that's, offer, you know, support services, and that peaks out at two, they would need to provide two additional parking stalls onsite, in addition to the standard residential parking requirement. And the standard residential parking requirement is, varies depending on whether there's available on-street parking or not. If there isn't available on-street parking, the single-family residential off-street parking requirement is four spaces. If there is available on-street parking, the parking requirement is two spaces. And those can be provided either interior, in a garage, or carport, or in a driveway, so long as it doesn't obstruct use of a sidewalk or the street.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for taking time for this. I have several questions, and I, and I, I want to quickly follow up on the question that was just asked, because for eight or less, it seems confusing, because there, there, it seems like there does need to be spacing for staff, but I'm not quite sure. So if there's a driveway, and it has two spaces for cars, is it two spaces for the residential driveway, and then two more spaces, if, say, there were two onsite staff? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. For eight or less, or for nine or more?
Well, for, for eight or less, that, that would be the, the, the standard for just residential parking requirements like Ken described. Layered onto that is, if there are staff, spaces for max, staff at maximum shift. When we get to nine or more, then it's a conditional use permit.
Sure.
And then you're addressing parking in a lot more site-specific, detailed way.
Okay, so, so let's go back to the eight or less, because I'm just, I'm not really understanding. Can we, can we use a, a typical example? Because I, I think this is interesting, because in, in this particular case that, that some of the constituents came up to speak about, the street is a very strange, it's a curved street, and so it's not sort of a typical straight street. And I, and I really believe that it has less on-street parking than the average street, just because of the way the, the street happens to be. So is there an actual math that can be done that figures out a situation where, in this case, you have a group home, it's on sort of an atypical street, there's a lot of parking, right? Can you, can you sort of play out that example for me?
Question. I'm not sure I necessarily have the answer that maybe you're looking for, but.
I think, I, I'm asking questions more for the constituents that, that are in this situation, so they know sort of how to address the city about when they see these issues. Because I realize it's going to be kind of case by case, but just sort of how to start asking the questions of, do they have enough parking for what I'm seeing?
Right.
You know?
So I mean, I think Jerry's point is well-taken. I'm not sure what the occupancy of this particular facility is, and whether that will trigger actually a special use permit in this zoning district. And that would give us more discretion to look at some of the nuances that you're, that you're appropriately asking about. But in a general matter, when we look at the residential parking requirement, it's simply, is there on-street parking, or isn't there? And I would concede that that's not necessarily a bright-line answer in a lot of Wheat Ridge neighborhoods. But, but we don't, we don't say, you know, if there's lots of on-street parking, or a little bit of on-street parking, we just say, is there on-street parking? So it's really a de minimis, unless, you know, we have to find that there's a significant lack of typical on-street parking, I think, to say, well, we're going to say that's not having on-street parking, and you need to meet that four parking space requirement. So we probably have a little bit of discretion there, I think, to say, at, at a certain point, this is a street that doesn't really have on-street parking, just because they have two spaces where a typical block would have 12.
Sure, sure. Is there, is there a way, and I realize we're, we're, I'm, I'm really getting into the weeds, and we can talk about this another time, but is there a way that, let's say it's a non-permitted, because it's less than eight people, situation, and there, and neighbors are seeing a lot of parking, it's obviously a group home, there's obviously staff, how is there a way that they can notify the city to ask the question regarding parking? Just regarding parking, not regarding the status of the group home or anything like that. But do you?
It's, I mean, it's something staff will be reviewing when we review the annual self-certification.
But that's only going to be for eight and above, for, excuse me, nine people and above, correct? Or this is even eight and above?
No, that's everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Self-certification applies across the board.
Great, 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 okay. You answered my question on there, thank you. The other questions I had regarding the meeting. So again, this is more for, how, how can people report in an appropriate way when they, they see and know what a meeting looks and feels like on their street, but what's the difference between that and my family having a party? And so what, what do those things look and smell like? So, and, and then who should people contact if they know that there's a regular meeting happening, it's causing the kinds of issues that we're seeing? So again, we don't get into the sticky mess of being discriminatory, but sort of following up on this, this, this issue that we talked about.
Well, I can take a stab at that, and then Ken may want to add. Like any other activity on your block that you're concerned about, you have the right to make a call.
Okay.
If my, I use the, you've heard me use the Norwegian family example, Norwegian, so there, let's say I've got a big Norwegian family, my father's family was, and if they're having continuous raucous parties, I expect the neighbors would make a call. And I'll, I'll narrow it down to your question a minute, but I wanted to sort of make the point that, that like any other activity on the block, you have the right as a resident to be concerned about what's happening. And to say, oh, the parties are continuous, and they're really, and they're noisy, and it's, it's a real mess, and I want to call code enforcement and see if we can deal with this. A group home for handicapped or disabled is not shielded from the application of the laws that apply. You know, if you're going to get the rights of a natural family, then you have the responsibilities and the vulnerability, if you will, to enforcement for allowed parties. There's no break under the Fair Housing Act amendments for that. So if you're having meetings that involve a lot of other people, that is not something that, that is what any other family on the, the block would be able to have, then your neighbors can make a call. On the who do you call, I would expect it's probably code enforcement. The city, no matter who, the city receives it, as you're well aware, the city has good protocols for directing calls to the right, to the right location. If in fact, the call is about, hmm, regular meetings are happening, lots more cars than just would relate to the people that are living there, and I'm concerned about that, then that comes in through the appropriate channels. That is one of the arenas where we do have support in the state statute. You know, you can't have meetings or, or gatherings inconsistent with its use as a residential building. And the state statute says that, so we, we've imported that and put it right here in the code. And that would be, I think, something where, if that complaint came in, just like the code enforcement officers would come and knock on your door and say, the loud parties after 2:00 are driving your neighbors crazy, we have a noise ordinance. They would have the same right to knock on the door and say, we believe that these, there are gatherings that are in excess of what is allowed, and we have a code here that doesn't allow that. Now, it's going to be a process. I fully expect that, that after we get six or eight months, or maybe a year of experience under this regime, we'll maybe want to tweak it a little bit. But that, that would be how I would expect activity like that to, to get reported, and how it would be responded to.
Great. I, I really appreciate all the time on this, because I, I just really want to sort of let everybody know the tools, and, and like you said before, that this is the start, and
Yeah.
and, and will probably be refined at some point. One more quick question, actually two. Regarding the take effect date, and this might be more of a question for, for Ken or for Patrick, the conditional use permit will be approved by whom?
So there's, there's actually two types of discretionary permits depending on the zoning district. In most residential settings with residential zoning, it would be a special use permit. A conditional use permit only applies in the mixed-use districts, and that is covered in the ordinance as well, so it could trigger a conditional use permit. But the instances of those, I think, are going to be less likely, just because I believe most of these are located in a, in a residential zone district. In terms of process, a, a special use permit starts out as in a out as an administrative approval, and the community development director, my position, is authorized to approve that provided we find that it meets certain codified criteria. There are several instances in which a public hearing review would be triggered by city council. There's no planning commission role or board of adjustment role. That would be if I don't believe it meets the criteria. Or if I impose conditions on the special use permit and the recipient of those conditions disagrees and wants to appeal that to city council. Or I just flat-out deny the special use permit, you know, having found that it doesn't comply with the criteria. And then finally, if there's a valid written objection from the public during the public noticing period, that would trigger a public hearing. So it's, you know, it's really, I think, under, for most special use permits currently, probably more often than not, they get approved administratively, but certainly there have been a handful of public hearings before council in my time.
Okay. And just, I promise, this is my last one. Is there any concern, like, just take me through a situation where there's a group home, they're at 12, and they're going to have six months to comply to eight because of where they are, because of whatever situation they're in. Is there any chance that that group home will be grandfathered in?
No, that's not, not the structure here. They conceivably could request a reasonable accommodation to say, you know, for us, 12 works and here's why, but there's a process for that and it's detailed.
And if you had a lot of information, like, well, gosh, we know that there are these parking issues, and I mean, are those things, then you can come back and say, this is why? Okay.
Yeah, those kinds of things are absolutely relevant in the reasonable accommodation world, just as those things are completely relevant and can be addressed in the special or conditional use permit world. Because then you have, you've departed the sort of use-by-right, you walk, talk, and act more like a family, and you're into a conditional review kind of world. And those kinds of impacts can and really should be addressed when a reasonable accommodation is requested.
Great. Thank you again. I just, I really appreciate it, and I think you all have done a great job of really addressing some of the issues and giving citizens some tools on how to make this good. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo everyone's gratitude for the amount of work on this, I think, very delicate needle that we have to thread here. I'm going to focus a little bit more on the certification process. Just like a technical thing in that section 14 when we're talking about sort of the grace period of coming into compliance, the six months almost feels a little bit arbitrary when we're actually having reporting periods of January 1st through June 30th and then July 1st. So I'd just like to put it out for consideration that if we're able to pass this through our second reading tonight, that instead of just an arbitrary six month, that we actually look at that July 1st as a compliance date, if that seems reasonable to people.
No objection to that. You're right that six months is a, just a pure kind of policy choice that you can and should get to make.
And then as far as that certification, would those be subject to core requests? So could citizens come and request those?
Yes, and we've given that a little thought in developing the form and have been pretty careful to avoid as much as we can hip the information that would be disclosed in the form. We've avoided identification of individuals, for example, because it, there's really not a governmental purpose for saying, identify all of the individuals, handicapped or disabled, et cetera. That's enough. It does not ask for, and I would never suggest the city should or, I'd resist and would tell the city, it should not, say, okay, name the five alcoholics that are living in this home. And I'm not joking about that. It's a very serious matter, and I wouldn't ask for that information, and I wouldn't let the city ask for it. Once it were in a public document, then it is disclosable. Under the Open Records Act, there's not a exception in the Open Records Act to delete names of persons. We release that information all the time. Business license records, liquor license records have the names of people. This would be a form that if the names were on it, we'd have to release it. So I'm glad you asked the question because we're being very careful in how that certification form is developed so that we get information that allows the city to implement the ordinance, but no more than that. And your question's an important one because people don't collect information on this imaginary Norwegian family of mine that someone else could then go get copies of. What are the names of your children? You know, that's the kind of thing that, no, we should not be collecting and we wouldn't propose to do so.
I appreciate that. The sensitivity in the certification, I think, was obvious there, so I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked.
Yep. So I'm going to go into the gray area a little bit here. So a lot of why this has come to our attention isn't just nearly the fact that these are operating in our community, but that their existence has created tension with neighbors due to higher occupancy. This, again, I'm going into this very gray area between our home rule versus the federal regulations. A lot of this, to me, comes down to communication between neighbors and whether they are 60- to 90-day neighbors or, you know, decades-long neighbors. Is there any, would we be able to, as a city, provide a good neighbor packet to these homes upon certification, which provided, you know, with the certification process, just a pretty straightforward guide to like common issues in the neighborhoods, like either codes and then just some like good neighborly conduct? I think it's not something that we can necessarily see as enforceable, but, you know, I think, you know, I've lived in my home for eight years and there's a lot of codes I'm unaware of. And so just maybe providing some guidance and some just good neighborly advice on how to, you know, be a good neighbor. And it's not something that we would be requiring people to sign in return, but to know that that's been provided and available. I mean, the more we can do to avoid the conflicts in the first place, you know, reduces the regulatory environment. So if that's something that we could take a look at, I don't know exactly what would go into that, but it seems that could go a certain distance to keep people from feeling that strain.
I think that perfectly permitted under the law, you know, because what you're doing is offering information. The city offers information on, to various people for various reasons that doesn't require them to respond. It's just, here are resources. There's no law that will prevent the city from giving people resources, and I can envision that there's nothing wrong with when the certification materials are exchanged, that here, you know, here's some good neighbor tools that you, as a group home, might consider. Certainly, they're not embedded in our regulations in any way, but these are tools for you. Just as if the city, it probably doesn't have this, but if the city has sort of a handout that it gives to people after there's been a noisy party about the noise ordinance, you know, and even if they don't, but the point I'm making is, the city easily could do that and would have every right to have a handout. Hi, you were a subject of a noise complaint and it got resolved, or there's not, didn't go any further, but here's a handout that might help you think about how to avoid that kind of complaint in the future. Nothing wrong with that.
And maybe to clarify too, Ms. Hulteen, were you also suggesting that maybe the neighbors of the group homes also receive these packets?
No.
Or the group home themselves?
Yeah, I think, you know, the, just the group home operators themselves. And then that just ties into my last. When we first started this conversation, the request at the study session had been that when we do finally pass a regulatory environment for this, that the city provide a one-pager FAQ. Given the complexity of the regulatory environment with federal regulations and home rule delicacies, and given that we have a lot of neighbors that are really concerned about this, it's a good tool for us and for our citizens to understand, you know, where our hands are tied in terms of being able to regulate and what that comes behind. So I just want to make sure that that's something that we take a look at once this is passed. Thank you so much for all your work on this.
Sure, you bet.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On number five on page seven, when we talk about meetings or gatherings that are consistent with a normal residential family setting, if I have a pampered chef party or if I have a, I'm a member of a political party and I'm having a meeting at my house in my neighborhood, one of my neighbors has consistently had meetings of a political party at her residence, no neighbor has any issues with it, it's not a concern for anybody, but it is consistent with our neighborhood setting. And so in my view of this, it looks to be as though we're judging the content of those meetings as opposed to whether they're happening or not because neighbors have meetings and gatherings of various individuals not related or otherwise for any number of reasons. But in this situation, it seems as though we're looking at group homes and saying, because you're a group home, you're having meetings of a certain content, and therefore that's not allowed. And I don't know how we do that.
Well, that's a perceptive question. I will say that in my work for a lot of jurisdictions on this subject, the meetings and gatherings, as they affect the neighborhood, have been a concern. The state legislature has recognized that concern. Whether it's fair or not to call out, and I think that's the import of your question, which is the right way to ask it, whether it's fair or not, the state legislature has done so and has incorporated this little requirement in the state statute, which is one of the few times the legislature gets to that level of detail. I included it here because I anticipated that that would be a, that would be a neighborhood concern, and frankly, it was one of the few kind of, we're a neighborhood and we think this group home, even though allowed by the law, affects us and we need tools. And it was one of the few tools that had support in the law that allowed you, to be very blunt, to treat the group home differently than the house down the block that's having a political gathering. So I guess I admit that you're right, it singles group homes out. And if, because it's in the state statute, doesn't mean it's perfect. The state legislature doesn't do this kind of work very often, and sometimes they don't do it as well as you do. If it remains in the code, which it can, I guess what I would want from an enforcement standpoint is for the city to just be very careful about not using this tool, which the state statute has given us, and I've put it in here, as a way to run a group home out of town. I think everyone gets kind of a pass, you know? If I have a big open house on my block, I kind of expect that I better not be having one for another couple of months because I live on that block. And that's how you operate, and that's how you act. And again, the group home doesn't get a pass to get to act a lot differently. If I'm having that open house every week, if I'm having that AA meeting and inviting a whole bunch of people every week, then it's a tool, I think, that's available.
Sure.
I'm taking too long to say that I agree with the concern you raise, and I think that while the city has the right to have this in the code, it's one of the few things you can say to the neighborhood, we've got a tool here, but it needs to be carefully used.
I totally agree, and I think that it's an issue that needs to be addressed. And I think that standing on the side of the state and the state statute is a good place to be. And just want to make sure that, like you said, we're not using this to hang our hat on or going around and looking for meetings as a way to enforce this, but rather, as you said, with a loud party. That is an instance where neighbors have been invited to file a complaint because noise is reaching them. So I just want to be mindful of that aspect because it does seem a little touchy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing, Ms. Hutchinson?
When I'm looking at these pictures here, it looks to me like there's a two-car garage. Is it? Are they using that? Okay. I think the whole thing with this is communication. This is like a business, kind of, because there is, you know, it is different than a regular family because some, one way or another, people are somehow, there is revenue that's going on there, whatever. I think we're lacking communication as far as if they have a two-car garage, I wonder why they can't use a two-car garage. They have a two-car driveway. I mean, four cars could probably fit in that driveway. If it was just communicated, could the cars just be parked in front of your house because we don't have, you know, nobody else is parking out on the street? And it's just something that is triggering the neighborhood? I mean, it's simple communication. I mean, it's worth a try.
Okay. Ma'am, okay, we're just really under questions from council.
But I mean, this is just, I don't know about the, I have a refrigerator in my garage too, but I still can put two cars in there. I mean, it's just a simple communication, starting with that and trying to problem-solve that way because they could put a lot of cars, you know, in that driveway instead of just two, and then parking all the way down the street? If that was communicated to them, maybe it would work, you know, just to try. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Counselors, before I close the public hearing...
I could just...
I'm sorry?
Respond to this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you may, okay.
I don't want to create expectations. I defer to Dahl maybe a little bit on this, but his oft-used Norwegian family, you know, we don't regularly check in with those folks and tell them where they should park their cars, whether they should keep the garage clear or the driveway clear, or if there's space in the driveway, they should park in the driveway, not in the street. So I think in the spirit of we can't regulate these other than as a single-family home, particularly in the eight and under category, I'm not sure we could advise a group home how to kind of park their property, so.
I'm just thinking of problem-solving and starting the easiest way, and it's by communication. There's nothing to lose.
And certainly, Ken's right. I lived in a neighborhood once where my neighbor kept, he had a two-car garage and it was filled with other stuff, and there was never a car in there. And so there were, and he had three kids, and so there were a lot of cars all over. And I would have preferred that he park his cars in the garage, but there was no law that I could rely upon to tell him, park your cars in the garage. Having said that, I agree that communication in any neighborhood is key to neighborhood peace and quiet. There's certainly no reason the city can't include in its, in its "how to be a good neighbor" materials that were, was the dialogue between myself and Councilmember Hulteen. Here's some things that you should consider. There's a difference between that and saying, here's where you have to park your cars. And I think we start with the, here's some things you consider, and see how that goes. But if you're going to start telling people not, to not omit to park in their garage, then you've got to tell the Norwegian family next door the very same thing. And I doubt the city's ready for that.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To that point, if we have a welcome packet solely for group homes, that seems in a way sort of passively discriminatory, that we're only going to tell group homes how to be a good neighbor, but everybody else probably already knows, so they're good to go. So in that respect, if we're going to give a welcome packet, we would have to give that to everybody as opposed to only those that we perceive would be neighborly. Or how does that work to give one group a welcome packet and one not?
Well, the city has a reason to reach out to group homes that are identified because of some regulatory, some regulations that truly apply only to group homes and that do not apply to these natural families. And there's a, while we try to keep that amount of interaction at eight and less to the minimum, because of the entitlements of the federal law that you can tell I strongly support, there are still, there is still a dialogue that we're having with these operations that we're not having with natural families. And the only thing I'm saying is, in the context of that dialogue, I don't think it's inappropriate to provide suggestions so long as they are clearly articulated as that. And I'm glad Councilmember Hulteen and I had that discussion because I wouldn't want them to be portrayed as anything like a requirement because then we're in the spot that you described.
Thank you. Thank you. Before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion and discussion on the motion, are there any further questions of council for staff or attorney? And I'm going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Hulteen, a motion is in order. Well, Ms. Hoppe, excuse me.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 022020 and ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning residential group homes and substance abuse clinic zoning requirements with the... requirements with the following changes. Section 14, the language of, within six months of the effective date of this ordinance, where it appears twice in the section, to be changed to by July 21st, or sorry, by July 1st, 2020. On second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. We have a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Please. Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item Number Two. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Resolution Number 10-2020, a resolution approving the assignment to the Housing Authority of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, DBA Metro West Housing Solutions, of $1,665,506 of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado's 2020 private equity bond volume cap allocation from the state ceiling for the private activity bonds, and authorizing the execution and delivery of an assignment and other documents in connection therewith. The issue, the City of Wheat Ridge has received an allocation of $1,665,506 for the purpose of issuing private activity bonds, PABs, in 2020 under the state ceiling imposed by the Tax Reform Act of 1987. Staff recommends assigning the city's allocation to West Metro Housing Solutions, which has agreed to issue PABs for the renovation of the Caesar Square Apartments owned and operated by the Jefferson County Housing Authority, JCHA. The city also assigned its 2019 PAB cap to West Metro Housing Solutions for this same project. JCHA is asking for the city's 2020 allocation to help increase the hard costs of improvements to Caesar Square from $6 million to approximately $10 million.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial, but I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Goff, Ms. Nosler Beck has provided a pretty good introduction to this. Do you have anything further to add to that?
Yeah, I'm not going to add much. And then also, Amy Case, the CFO with Jefferson County Housing Authority, is here, and she can answer any questions that you may have, or if she has anything to say. But we did discuss this in study session twice, this project twice, once for the 2019 allocation and also for the 2020 allocation, so City Council has heard and seen this twice. This is, in my mind, an exciting project for the City of Wheat Ridge, because this is the first time in my tenure with the city that we've been able to use our private activity bond allocation within Wheat Ridge for a Wheat Ridge project. So this is going to infuse $10 million worth of investment into a project that is going to provide and maintain affordable housing, 108 units. So that, I think I'll just leave it at that. It's pretty self-explanatory, other than that. And maybe one more thing, the city receives an annual allocation of private activity bond capacity. This is not cash that the city is turning over to the Housing Authority. So there's no cost to the city for this. This is just an allocation of bonding capacity that the city gets through this federal tax program.
Thank you. Before I go to questions from counsel, I will open this to comments from the public. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Is there anyone here who has not signed up who would like to speak at this time? And I don't see anyone, so I will open the floor up to questions from counsel. Mr. Urban.
I would just add that this allocation that's provided on any basis also is not able to be banked in any way, so whether we use it or not, it's not something that we can hold on to. So this is important to allow the Jefferson County Housing Authority to use this allocation in the best way possible, otherwise we'll lose it.
Thank you. Any other questions before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? And I'm going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please provide us with a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 10-2020, a resolution approving the assignment to the Housing Authority of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, DBA Metro West Housing Solutions, of $1,665,506 of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado's 2020 private activity bond volume cap allocation from the state ceiling for private activity bonds, and authorizing the execution and delivery of an assignment and other documents in connection therewith.
Second. A second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. Thank you. This will bring us to Agenda Item Number Three. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill Number 03-2020, an ordinance amending Section 1-5 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning penalties for municipal court violations. At issue, the Colorado Legislature passed House Bill 1148 in 2019, amending the length of time to which a person may be sentenced for violations of municipal laws. In a prior session, the state also increased the amount of that fine, of the fine that municipal courts could impose for such violations of municipal laws. This ordinance modifies the code laws accordingly.
Thank you. This is an ordinance for first reading, which is to set the date, time, and location for a hearing, and motion is in order. Ms. Weaver.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 03-2020, an ordinance amending Section 1-5 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning penalties for municipal court violations on first reading. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, February 24th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in Council, City Council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. Second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the, actually, this is the first reading, so will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes the agenda items that we have on our agenda item for this evening. We will now go to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff.
Just a couple of quick things. I believe our new chief, Murtha, is here. Official start date today for our new police chief, Christopher Murtha, so welcome him again. I think you've all met him. We don't have a City Council meeting next Monday, so do not show up for that, please. But next Tuesday, if you want to show up, or even before, I think they're having some pre-opening specials, but Hostia in Colorado is going to finally be open for the public February 18th, so maybe we'll see you there. Thanks.
Very good. City Attorneys Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. We will go to Elected Officials Matters and start with our clerk, Mr. Kirk Patrick.
Do you have other news?
Thank you. We will go to our counsel and start with Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank the Public Works people for their plowing. Really appreciate that. And also, I want to mention the next meeting regarding Jefferson County Fairgrounds, the possible closure is February 25th at the Taj Mahal at 8:00 in the morning. No decisions have been made yet, and also, I just want to wish everybody a happy Valentine's.
Thank you. Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. And thanks again for all the work on the group homes conversation. I really appreciate that. And welcome, Chief Murtha. It's great to have you here. Thanks to everybody on the snowplows, and I just want to apologize for running in a little bit late. Been a little under the weather, so appreciate it.
Okay, nice to have you here. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Director for the City Attorney. I was wondering if we could have a primer or some sort of educational piece for council members regarding open meetings laws and records in relation to replying to emails. There's been several instances, very innocuous, very, looking at it would be very bland, but it is instances of replying back to council emails, and so I just want to make sure that all council members are aware of the need to be very mindful, even in the mundane and the innocuous situations, to not reply back. There may be other instances involving meetings or other gatherings, and a primer that sets the baseline for us all would be helpful, I think.
You bet. There's always, there's turnover on council, and it's always well to remember that and to put together that information. I've done it a number of times. Let me look at the materials I have and likely generate a little memo that's hopefully not too lengthy and kind of has some good bullet point information, and then perhaps make myself available at staff comments at a future study session, following the distribution of that memo, if there are any questions about it. I don't know that we need a whole 40 minutes on it, but you'll have the memo from me, and that may inspire some questions, and we can handle those in a study session context.
Thank you. And I just, for council members that received a curt or short email from me in that regard, it's difficult for me to communicate on it, except to say that I want to be removed from that thread, so don't take the curtiness of those emails to be anything other than just simply trying to avoid any violations of open meeting laws. Thank you.
Rule number one being, don't reply to all, and if you get that done, you're halfway there, so.
We'll look forward to your memo.
All right.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman.
Nothing right now, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just also wanted to report a little bit on the closure, or the closure of the Jeffco Fairgrounds. It is, just in talking with several extension agent friends, it is a direct correlation to the funds that weren't allocated in the voting that we did last fall. So I just kind of wanted to connect the dots there, that that was, along with the police funding that we had been talking about, that's also an effect of not having those funds available in Jefferson County.
Thank you. Ms. Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank staff. About a month ago, I requested that staff revisit the accommodation language at the top of the agendas, and I'm just incredibly grateful that staff actually went beyond the request and have updated that accommodation statement to be very inclusive and to not have specific deadlines. And I know a couple of people in the community have already reached out to me and expressed gratitude, so thank you, staff, for stepping up on that. The second thing is, I, starting this on, sorry, I have to look at the date here, February 22nd, I'm hosting my first District 2 Fourth Saturday meeting. So the Fourth Saturday of every month, I will be at the Starbucks Safeway Cafe at 38th and Wadsworth from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. And everyone in the city who's interested is welcome to come. It's going to focus on District 2. For this one, we're going to really focus specifically on Wheat Ridge Speaks, as well as the Wadsworth Project, so I will also get the word out, but starting the Fourth Saturday of February, I will be holding those every month. And then the last thing is, I attended the Stevens Elementary PTO meeting last week and was really excited to hear for the first time. They actually are already fully reserved for both their kindergarten and fifth grade, and that's just a huge turnaround for that school, so it's exciting to see good things happening in our local schools. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo those of you that thanked our people that were out plowing the streets over the weekend and probably again tonight. We, and I do want to thank everybody who came out tonight to speak for the group homes topic. I know there were a few more that wanted to come out and speak, but with the weather and things like that, I hope that we're going a long way to help out a lot of District 3 residents, because I know this was something that came up quite a bit as I was walking through the neighborhood. So thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I would like to, we had a Second Saturday Coffee with the Mayor on Saturday. I'd like to thank those citizens and residents that came by, and we had a good conversation. We'll be there back on the Second Saturday in March. Please be careful as you drive out on our streets, there's, as you may know, snow in the forecast, so be careful out there, and thank you for coming.
Mr. Mayor, before we adjourn, I forgot, Mr. Johnstone has something he'd like to say there. He left something at your chairs.
Oh, Mr. Johnstone.
Thank you, Patrick, and Mayor. Yeah, we had mentioned previously that in terms of the communication on the Wheat Ridge Speaks program, it is live now officially for the Planning Commission hearing that was held last week, and it'll be live for the next, the first City Council meeting on March 9th. It'll go live for you to view it on February 28th, so we're all in and excited about that. We have a couple communications tools that are kind of tactile. One is just a postcard description of it that we'll have available at city facilities if people want to pick that up, or if we want to hand those out in different scenarios. And then for you all, we had mentioned that we were going to give you what we gave you tonight, which is just a simple business card intended to be used between you and your constituents in whatever way we see fit. It's a very simple, there's not a lot of information there, and the intent is really to, when someone grabs you in the grocery store and asks you about a pending land use case, and you know that because you've seen the quasi-judicial sheet, that that's one that you shouldn't be talking about, that you've got a really quick communications device, which is to grab this out of your wallet or bag, or whatever the case may be, and say, "Actually, I can't talk about that, but here's a website where you can put in, you know, all the inputs you'd like, and it'll get directly to me through that portal." So let us know if you have questions or if you need more, so.
Okay, thank you so much. And this is a copy, if we're on the television, that's what Mr. Johnstone is talking about, and I thought that we were going to get by with a little less in our wallets, but, you know, or hopefully have a little more cash, but we'll put these in there and pass those out. It's a great tool that's coming, Wheat Ridge Speaks. If there is no more, Ms. Holtein, looks like she's got one more item.
I just want to, it's not one more item, it's just from response. These are wonderful. Can we keep these, or the postcards, at the table in the back so that they're available for people when they come in, so they know that's an option? Thanks.
We will give them out aplenty. All right. There being no more business, we will stand adjourned, and we will open our study session in about five minutes or so. Thank you. We'll get our meeting going. I would like to call to order the special study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for February 10, 2020. Council members, it's our normal practice and we, and we employed it tonight to have public comment on study session items at the beginning of our meeting. We've done it several, we've done it both ways. We have several citizens or at least one who came after, who was delayed by the snow tonight and, and asked if we might suspend the rules and take public comment on agenda items now. Is there any objection with that? Okay. Then I would like to invite the public, I don't have any, anyone signed up to speak on this, but if you would like to come forth and speak on a study session item, please come to the podium and adjust the microphone so it's convenient for you. Give us your first name and your last name, if you'd spell your last name, and give us your address.
I'm Leland Dominicis, spelled D-O-M-I-N-I-C-I-S, 6690 West 38th Avenue here in Wheat Ridge. Also owner of Four Squares Framing at the same location. And I would like to speak on the matter of snow removal. My complaints aren't at all with the city. I think they're doing a great job coming down 38th Avenue. As soon as I was leaving my parking lot this morning, there was two plow trucks coming down the street on the way here. So, good job with that. And I haven't really had much problem with them covering up my sidewalks. It happens, but I just go out and reshovel it. I do it four or five times a day, a lot of times. My issue is with neighboring businesses up and down 38th Avenue not doing their part and removing their snow off the sidewalks at all, most in a lot of cases, or when they do. Just really not doing a really good job at all. Not providing safe access for the public to go up and down the sidewalks. You know, in a lot of cases, you know, like I said, they're not removing the snow at all. In some cases, it's just barely done and people still aren't able to use the sidewalks. There's a large amount of disabled and elderly people that travel up and down the street every day. I see them cruising down the street in the traffic lanes on their scooters and, you know, walking their dogs and, or just people going to the bus stop. There's a bus stop on the same block that I, that we're located on. And they can't get to the bus walk, they're not able to cross. And so I see that a lot happening. That's an accident waiting to happen. And it also affects business and income. We depend a lot on foot traffic, even in the winter time, people do come in. That's actually one of the reasons why I was late today. I was helping a customer that walked in last minute, just walking down the sidewalk. My neighboring businesses on the, both sides of me, the Wheat Ridge Pharmacy, they've been actually really responsive. I've gotten hold of the owner of the property. And he came out after his plow driver came and plowed all the snow off of their parking lot onto the sidewalk. And I complained about him. He actually came out and shoveled it himself and removed it. And he's come out a couple of times since then. So he's been really responsive. On the opposite side of me, the parking lot with the Crest Furniture Business there, not as good of a response from them. I asked them, you know, after their plow driver came and did the same thing to, if they could, you know, call them back, have it removed, you know, address it for the future, or if one of them can go out and shovel it. And did not get a good response from them or the plow driver because it turns out he was also the business owner of the Wheat Ridge Bowling Alley across the street from us. And he wasn't very happy that I asked him to replow the sidewalks. And again, he has been the one who's been plowing the sidewalks next to us. And he scrapes them with his plow, but they're only half scraped, maybe a foot and a half to a half of walking space. And it's just all ice and not really passable and safe. So I would just like to know what I could do about that. Who do I go to? What is the city doing about that? Is there someone out going to businesses and homeowners, making sure that they're doing this and following the ordinance? I understand that you have 24 hours after the snow stops falling to remove it. I think that's plenty of time. A lot of times I'm out there before the snow even stops falling myself, just to make sure, you know, if it's eight in the morning, people need to get to work seven in the morning, snow's still falling. I'll go out there and shovel it, like I said, multiple times a day. I do think that that something needs to be addressed, maybe something for people on Main Thoroughways where they have less time than 24 hours to get it done. And then also clarification on what exactly has to be done. Do they just shovel a foot wide path? Or does it have to be the complete sidewalk? And is it a matter of just driving it over it with a truck? Or they need to get out and actually salt it or shovel it and do what they have to do to completely remove the snow? Because a truck can't reach all the areas. On both sides of our property, the city has the large square planters that were placed out there by the city that they take care of. In the winter time, unfortunately, they're just trash receptacles and they get filled with trash. And then also, that's what the plow drivers are using to push their snow against. And, and that's, you know, what's spilling over onto the sidewalks on both sides of my property at least. So that's my specific case. But I noticed all up and down 38th Avenue, there's many businesses, lots of vacant properties and just businesses that are open that do not go out and address the situation. And so, sorry, I don't mean to ramble too much, but I just want to know what's being done. What can we do? How do we address it? Because I'm kind of having a hard time doing it by myself.
Okay. Well, we're going to, we're going to talk about those issues at our study session. And I'm sure that if you have some more questions, you could speak with our, our city, probably, Community Development, Mr. Johnstone's department.
Any of us over here. Yep.
What was that, just hand it, if I had any questions?
Yeah, any of us over here. Yep.
Okay.
Glad to talk to you. Yep. I know where you're at. I'll find you. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. All right. Is there anyone else that, that wanted to speak on anything on the study session tonight? Okay. We will conclude our public comment on this item and go to agenda item number one, enforcement of snow removal policy. Mr. Goff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a cross-departmental issue. So I have, we have Division Chief Lawrence here this evening, our Parks Manager Zach Lovato, and Greg Knoos and our Public Works Director. So we're all here this evening to discuss this with city council. And I'll turn it over to Jim here in a, in a minute. But just a little bit of backgrounds, especially for the newer council members, for many, many years, we did not have an ordinance in the city of Wheat Ridge that required anybody to remove their snow from their sidewalk. We finally were able to get an ordinance passed a couple of years ago. And the direction at that time was to see how it went. And hopefully people and residents and businesses voluntarily complied with, with the ordinance. And as you heard tonight, it's not happening citywide still. So there was a request by council to bring this back this evening to talk about our enforcement policy. And Ms. Lawrence put together a memo with some proposals, suggestions on, on maybe a direction that we could go. So I'm going to turn it over to him now. And, and the rest of us will be here to help with the discussion.
Ms. Lawrence?
Thanks, sir. First off, I am not a snow removal expert.
[laughing]
But these guys over here are. So we'll, we'll be able to answer some questions, I think. The idea that we had originally was to, to get a group of experts together, we got a committee together for representing every department in the city. Because everybody does have a little piece of this somehow. And, and we talked about, how can we, we, we think Wheat Ridge does really well. And, and one of the things we talked about was, wouldn't it be great if there was a, some kind of an organization that came out and judged your roads and compared you to other cities? And I think we would score very high in, in such a, such a thing. But there isn't anything like that. We do a pretty good job. We think we can do better. We can look at our, our, our policies and practices and come up with some ideas. Most of what I put together are not real cost, costly measures that we could do, but they may not work also. So there are things that we could talk about if we wanted to look at increasing coverage. That, that is going to be expensive. We know that, excuse me, these tandem trucks are a quarter of a million dollars. And accrue to run that if we're trying to increase, you know, the, the types of things that we do. So, so those are things that we would have to talk about and, and consider in budget and all of that. But the way we broke this down was three basic areas. Talk about education first, to continue to educate the public. And then a second section would be assistance. How do we help people that need some help? And then the third is enforcement. And, and that's really where, where I come in. One of the, the things that I wanted to talk about, and I think how we got this whole thing started at first, was how do, how do we enforce a little more efficiently? And we have, we have a couple of different options right now. We can put somebody, we can send somebody to municipal court. So we write them the summons and then they go to court. That would be six, six weeks before they would have a court date, they would appear in court and a judge would make a determination if this was an unlawful act or not. Another option that we have that works really well with code enforcement is our administrative citation process that I think you're all pretty familiar with. That works really good. We come in and give a warning and then wait 10 days, come back. And if the problem still exists, then we would issue that citation. The citation stands unless the person that receives the citation wants, wants to go to a, a hearing officer. And the hearing officer will look at that. If, if they choose not to have a hearing, then the, the fee is, the fine is, is immediately assessed. We still don't like that 10 days, especially when we're talking about snow. So we really want to enforce that 24 hours, just as, as our ordinance says. And what I think would work better would be more akin to a, a parking ticket. So an officer could come by, see that the sidewalk has not been cleared, it's been 24 hours since the snow stopped falling. And we'll just write that ticket and stick it on the door. And the expectation is that it gets paid. You would still have the opportunity to request a hearing and, and try to present your side of the story. And, and a hearing officer could handle that. It would really speed things up. And unfortunately, we don't have that written into our municipal code right now. So we've already contacted Mr. Dahl's office. We have one of the attorneys there, Joe Rivera, is working on that right now. I think there's other cities that do something similar. So that's what we're looking at in enforcement. If, if you'd like to talk about some of the educational things and the assistance things that I've put into this, I think this is a great opportunity for council to have a discussion. You know, what do you, what are you interested in? And what do you think we should work on? And how should we direct our energies in these areas?
Thank you. Well, I guess you picked the right time of year to bring this up to us.
[laughing]
So we will open it for questions. And I'll start with Ms. Holtean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was unbelievably impressed with the, just cross-department collaboration on this, I think. Kudos to the city for doing that. When I originally brought this forward and suggested we talk about it, my concern was principally our, our principal corridors, our commercial corridors, where we have, you know, public transportation, access to schools, a lot of our parks. And these are, you know, services and transportation that our community depends on. And, and I will say, having had the chance in last week to review this again, the majority of property owners, especially commercial property owners, actually do go out and shovel. And, you know, the, the standards that we were hearing from our speaker tonight about, is that a foot and a half or is it the whole thing? And I think that's, that's a, a fine point that, that I don't know if I'm in any position to discuss. But there are a handful on, on any stretch that, that either don't shovel or, as we were hearing tonight, their, their plow drivers take all the snow that is from the parking lot and put it in the right of way and create these mountains that then take weeks to melt. So, so when the rest of the snow has naturally melted, we have this incredible ice bank. So my, I guess where, where I'm coming from at this point is, I'm excited by the programmatic suggestions that come through here around Snow Buddies and, and doing some mapping around identifying properties that maybe are either orphaned or, you know, are, are continual problems in the neighborhoods. And to me, that's kind of a longer term discussion that maybe impacts, you know, how we're doing our community engagement tour this year. Or maybe there's sort of a, a next step with looking at that more comprehensive programmatic approach in the neighborhoods. For now, I would really like to focus on how do we make sure our principal corridors are safe? And, in, in, in particular ones that service transit, schools, and our major shopping centers. So what that looks like, I think, is the discussion we're about to, to have tonight. I do want to mention the Wheat Ridge Snow Angels, Volunteers of America, or, yeah, yeah, Volunteers for America actually has a Snow Buddies program that operates in Jefferson County. that operates in Jefferson County and in Wheat Ridge. So, the, the second piece of it around enforcement is, you know, again, sort of focusing on the commercial. I'm, I'm very hesitant to get into the neighborhoods right now, in part because we don't have a lot of sidewalks. And it seems weird to me to be enforcing shoveling sidewalks where there's sidewalk on one side of the street and not on the other side. And, and I think we would be kind of kicking the hornet's nest out of, out of the gate, whereas our commercial corridors do pretty much have sidewalks. And maybe this will call to attention, we need sidewalks there. Whatever we do, I really like the ideas around the education and reminding people and, and, you know, recognizing our good neighbors who do a good job, like we were hearing tonight, that make sure they get out and shovel multiple times. So, I've been trying to call out my good neighbors, and, and I think that's, that's a good approach. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Noslerbeck.
I just want to talk about the ticket versus the invoicing. It seems to me like if we tick it, then we're not really solving the problem, whereas like if we're invoicing, at least the walk is shoveled, and we're, we're actually solving the, the problem. And so, I, I like the idea of just doing it and charging businesses afterwards, if we're going along commercial corridors.
Right. So, the way, the way it works in code enforcement is you have fines and you have fees. So, if there is an abatement cost, that cost is the responsibility of the property owner as well as a fine. So, that, that can be handled. I mean, and it depends on how aggressive, you know, what's, what's the dollar amount? What is it, what's the going rate for not shoveling your sidewalk? I'm not really sure right now. But we can check with other cities, and, and we have, like I said, we have Joe Rivera investigating that. Is it a couple of hundred dollars? Does that get somebody's attention so that they are going to make sure that the sidewalk gets, gets shoveled the next time? You know, I, I don't know.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I appreciate all the work you guys put into putting this memo together. I think that I agree with the points under the education piece, and also under the assistance piece. And I think with enforcement, I'm leaning towards the ticket if it's not done within 24 hours. There are some properties that you can see that obviously it's, they have an absent property owner, because, you know, a couple of days later, it's still not shoveled. And so, if we move to, uh, just do it and then invoice them, then I would think that it would have to have a different timeframe on it. So, if it's not done within 24 hours, there's the ticket, and then there would be a different level of, then if it's not taken care of, you know, within the 48 or whatever, then, then we would move on to the next level. We have, as a city though, major abandoned areas. And so, those, I feel, need to be identified, and, and we need to figure out how to address those. And if that means that we're taking care of those, then, you know, there's going to be a real cost to that. And there are some very long stretches of abandoned areas, and like 44th Avenue on the north side of the road, the, the people who, that's their backyard and that's their fence, and then there's the sidewalk on 44th Avenue. So, they're supposed to be responsible to come out of their house, walk all the way down the block and around, and then shovel the piece where their backyard is. Well, I just don't consider that reasonable. And so, like those types of areas, I think, are the areas that are considered abandoned areas, that we need to make sure that we're finding and solving. And then, I, I would like to kind of look at something where we focus proactively in the, in the commercial districts, and then reactively in the neighborhoods. So, if someone complains in the neighborhood, then we go check it out. But otherwise, we're proactive in the commercial districts.
Mr. Goff.
Mr. Mayor, this might be a good time. Ms. Hoppy brought up the abandoned areas, and I think Zach Lovato maybe could speak real quick to what areas this, the city is currently picking up. I'm not sure if it's, they're covering, we're covering all the, we're not covering all the abandoned areas, obviously, but there are certain areas that the city is doing. Could you speak to that, Zach?
Yeah, sure. So, we do, outside of the sidewalk areas that are adjacent to city-owned properties, there's a few areas of sidewalk that we do do. And how we got to the point where we're plowing those areas is something that's, I think, from my assessment, that's just grown a little bit over time for one reason or another. I could, the, the ones that come to mind right now are 38th Avenue from Harland to Sheridan on both sides of the street, Wadsworth from 26th to 29th on this side, on the east side of the street, and then we go all the way to 32nd to the edge of Crown Hill on the west side, and then wrap around and do 32nd down to Holland, I believe, wherever that sidewalk starts. 44th Avenue, I know is a tricky one because of the, the shadiness of the south side of the street and the curve there. We do 44th basically from Anderson Park up to Dover on both sides. Why we stop there, I think, is, is something I think is, we all wonder a little bit, because it, it looks like to the, to the east of, on that road, some of those areas don't typically get attended to, and that's, I think, the abandoned area that you're speaking to. And we do Kipling from 32nd up to 44th on the east side, so along Discovery Park in that area. And that's just about it. I might have missed one or two in there somewhere, but it's everything that's adjacent to city-owned property, the Greenbelt, and then those, those areas in particular. The, the trick with plowing areas that are not adjacent to city-owned property is, number one, the, the sidewalks weren't always built out at the same time. So, Wheat Ridge, it's kind of the beauty of Wheat Ridge is that, you know, as it developed, you know, it has its uniqueness in some areas where there's no sidewalks, some areas where it's more developed. But, but the trick to servicing those sidewalks along the, the major corridors is that there's some disconnectivity in the sidewalks. So, in particular, 38th West of Kipling, you'll see that, I think, the sidewalk area actually is part of the asphalt roadway. That's where people need to walk. And there could be some, some areas down that road, you'll see where residents or neighborhoods made a little effort to make a stone pathway, or a very small asphalt walkway, crushed granite walkway, to provide for pedestrians, but it's not necessarily a, a city asset, or in the right-of-way even. So, there's some of those challenges. The other one is, is when we're plowing along areas that are not owned by the city, you open yourselves up to liability from damages caused to those properties. So, for instance, we plow along somebody's property line, and we tear up a fence, or we, we tear up their grass, break some sprinkler heads, damage concrete walls, whatever it may be, we would probably be responsible, or I would think we would have to be responsible for, for making that right. So, I think it makes sense that in most municipalities, they, they put the responsibility on the property owner. City-owned property, city takes care of those sidewalks. If it's adjacent to privately-owned property, then the property owner. And I, and I would guess that's probably why they, they operate that way, because of that reason. Now, I think there are certain instances where the, the right-of-way has been built out well enough, where there's a large buffer between the, the developed property and the street, and you can easily fit a piece of equipment on there, and it's something that you're not likely to, to hurt someone's adjoining property. And those areas, I think, number one, usually are already taken care of, but if not, those could be serviced, I think, fairly easily. But to, to, to take care of all of the major corridors, besides the tricks of the different size sidewalks that we have, the different, uh, different build-outs that we have up next to the, the sidewalks in, in different parts of the city, would be the resources to, to do it. So, you would have to have enough people, you'd have to have enough equipment. And, and then it becomes a little tricky when, when we've already heard earlier tonight that the slush gets thrown up on the sidewalk, because you really have two sidewalk snow removal methods. You have your primary method, which could be just a simple shovel, or any sort of plow on a small piece of machinery like an ATV, and that'll take care of the nice fluffy snow. When it gets iced up, then you have to have heavier equipment. You have to have tractors and, and Bobcats or skid steer type of equipment to actually scrape that off. So, it's, it's two different types of snow removal, it's two different types of equipment, and it's, it's a lot of repeats, a lot of follow-up. So, I would suggest that, you know, what we would need to do in order to wrap our minds around what it would take to do even just the major corridors, is do a study of what the sidewalks look like, their, their width, and what they're next to, and, and estimate how much that would take in resources to take care of those areas.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver.
Um, thank you so much. And, and I, I really appreciate and agree with the fact that the corridors are a huge, a huge concern. I just, I really like all of the ideas on the assistance, and I, and I think there's some really great opportunities. And even though Jefferson County has a, a Snow Buddy type of program, you know, I, I look at the Wheat Ridge Snow Angels, and I think, oh, maybe that could be connected with some of the localized neighborhood things we're doing. And, because this is the only way I'm going to get wings, is by being in a program like this. So, so, that was funny. Come on. So, I, I just, I love that kind of idea, and it even makes me think if that's something we can connect with, like, a local works, or, you know, I think about the, the dumpster program we have in, in the summer sometimes. And, you know, we, we have so many residents that are aging in place in Wheat Ridge that, that while I, I realize the priority needs to be the corridors, I just think there's a real opportunity here to, to create some, some great community building with neighbors. And, and, and I love the adopt, the sidewalk. Can I have all of these things? It's not an or. And then the plowed guarantee, just, just to address some of the things that were said earlier tonight about just recognizing that people are going out, and then they're sort of feeling defeated because the plow comes through, and sort of how we can better, better coordinate that. And even, and even maybe, you know, without sort of identifying people, if there's a way with people who, who, who may need assistance, you know, because I, I can think of a lot of my neighbors who need more than 24 hours, or, or might know that that's going to be difficult on them for whatever reason, aging, whatever, and, and just having a list of, of, oh, okay, these properties, we know, we can send the Snow Angels on, or, or, you know, just that, that having to evaluate, and hopefully not, not necessarily involve the crew that's working on the corridors, but is there something that neighborhoods can actually activate? So, thank you for this, and, and I really love the, I think the assistance piece is just part of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick question in regards to one of our earlier speakers. He, he talked about when they go out and they go shoveling, and then the plows come through. What's the typical timeline for plows to go through on the major corridors versus neighborhoods versus kind of some of those like Ward, like some of those sort of bigger streets, but not?
Every storm is different. Like, tonight is different from the storm this past weekend, as fast as it's moved in and as quick as the streets turned white. I can tell you that the crews respond as quickly as they can to mitigate that, but the snow has to go somewhere. And obviously, the deeper it is, the, the bigger place it, it needs to go. One thing I need to add and maybe throw in here is, is the, the issue of the splashback from the plows. It does happen, but I can tell you our, our crews are very aware of that. With every storm that they have, they slow down in certain areas because they know the walk is closer. For example, Pierce Street in front of Peter and Paul Church, they're very diligent about getting their walks clean for the obvious reason. We're very diligent about driving as slow as possible through there to, to not have the splashback on the walks. The other thing is that there's splashback from the vehicles that drive through there. It's not from the plows. But our guys do everything they can to mitigate that. They don't purposely go through there and splash the snow. But it's different with every storm, and, and we try to work as best we can. The other thing I want to add too is, is in an emergency, on those, on the routes that we're talking about, that's where the snow will go, is on the sidewalk, because there, there just won't be any other place when we're plowing, when we have a blizzard condition or an emergency situation. And that's something we try and get out to the public every year when our snow season starts, as well as asking citizens to wait as long as they can for us to finish our work before they start cleaning their sidewalks.
I guess one follow-up I have to that is, well, I guess I kind of forgot where I was going with that. Well, let me just say that I, I support making sure that we, we keep the enforcement up on the major corridors. I would like us not to get into the neighborhoods as much. I do think that as we get into some of the NRS stuff, as, as that's put in, some neighborhoods might want to be plowed a little bit different and, and enforced a little bit different. So, I think maybe we kind of wait on that, but we definitely need to get into, oh, that's what I was going to ask. Is there, in, in our ordinances now, or in our, in our codes, is there a penalty for, say, you've got the plow drivers that are pushing the snow onto the sidewalk, or pushing the snow into the street? Is there, can we build in something, I guess, I know we can, but to have more of a penalty for those business owners or those, those plow companies that are doing that?
I don't know that there's a more of a penalty, but it is in, it is in the ordinance. It's accounted for. You can't push snow on the street. Can't shovel into the street.
Right. Yeah. So, I, I think that we really need to work on education, maybe with our, our citizens, to make sure that they understand that what the timeframe is to go out and shovel, you know, maybe the best time is not when it's snowing right then, wait till they come through and, and plow, and you'll still have, hopefully, plenty of time within that 24 hours, and it's not going to be 24 hours and one minute when they, when the police officer of code enforcement comes by, so.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was also going to touch on that education piece as far as where residents or business owners shovel their snow, as opposed to pushing it back into the street where the plow pushes it back onto the sidewalk, if there's some sort of green space or their yards that they can shovel that into. I also wanted to echo the appreciation for the assistance program. I think it would be great to get a digital map, especially, and I don't know if we can somehow attach it to the Wheat Ridge Speaks and, and just kind of identify areas that really need some help. And if residents need assistance, I mean, we've, we've seen on Facebook, people offering to, to shovel, like, their neighbors, or, or that they're available, and then people asking, you know, are there any shovelers out today? And so, I think that Facebook is, is a really good tool to help residents connect with that assistance that they may need. I also really liked some of the points that Zach made as far as, you know, the liability of, of doing some of that snow removal of, of, of like private properties or around them that may not do it within the timeframe. I would really kind of stay away from shoveling abatements and then invoicing. I think that that would cause a lot of issues, and then at that point, we're talking about a lot of resources, a lot more money, and I think that would be a lot, a lot more difficult than maybe an enforcement piece, you know, an, an immediate enforcement, enforcement piece. And I also agree with the, we definitely need to focus on our commercial corridors and, and the, the streets that people are going to be needing to navigate for public transportation. I know that that's, that's an issue. And then, I, I just kind of had a question as far as, and this was also brought up on Facebook about, you know, the, how CDOT is pretty inept at plowing both Kipling and Wadsworth, and how a lot of the time when it snows, we have a lot of closures on Kipling. And I will give a lot of kudos to our, our Wheat Ridge City staff, because you guys do an incredible job at plowing. I drive around in Arvada, Golden Lakewood, and I would say Wheat Ridge is always, always the best, and my coworkers that, that commute from other cities always say, you know, once we got to Wheat Ridge, we had no problems, but getting from Arvada or Westminster, like, it was challenging. And so, I just, I really want, I want to give you that recognition, because it's really stated everywhere in, in the, in the communities. And I don't know if we could enter into an IGA of plowing Kipling and Wadsworth and maybe taking that on as, as ours, as opposed to relying on CDOT? I don't know if, if that would be possible.
Greg, can you talk about what we do today currently on those corridors?
Can you talk about what we do today currently on those corridors?
Um, we, we don't. Um, we know that we need to do 32nd usually at Kipling, southbound. Um, that's usually a given. Also the hill on Wadsworth at I-70 as you're going southbound. Um, we usually hit that and we coordinate that with Arvada. Um, we will respond where there's a problem on, that we know about on those corridors, but there would be additional resources that would be needed, um, to do it right and to do it, you know, to meet our standard and to do it effectively with each storm.
Okay. Additional discussion? Mr., um, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, today I did my own assessment. I went from Youngsfield to Sheridan on 44th and 38th Avenue. The north side of the streets, the snow melts. It's the south side that seems to, mostly it melts, okay? The south side seems to be more of a problem, okay? Because of buildings, shading, things like that. So what I found, the majority of, um, businesses or areas not shoveled were businesses, okay? And that was on the south side. That's 44th. That's also 38th. And I will also state that there are some businesses that regularly shovel, but there are others that do not. So if the sidewalks are shoveled and then you come up to a corner and it could be a place where a person's gonna cross the street or it's a traffic light, there's no shoveling there. It's like just snow, but then the sidewalk's done. And, um, let's see, what else? Oh, on 44th Avenue regarding the sidewalks that are on the south side, if there are homes that are facing a side street and then the, the big sidewalks there by 44th, whose responsibility is that? Is that the city's or is that the homeowners like at a corner?
Typically if it's adjacent to the property of, the property, it's, it's that property owner. So if, if the sidewalk wraps around, um, along 44th, it's adjacent to that property, it's, it's typically the property owner.
Okay.
There might be some areas that are a little different, but...
So those aren't getting done?
Correct.
Very much. Those are not getting done. Then I, west of 38th, um, by Sprouts, Kipling area, I saw a lady pass, walking today, an elderly lady walking with her groceries, um, on the south side of the street. Okay, so there's no sidewalk. We're talking she's walking on ice and she's walking like this. That's an accident waiting to happen. Why are there no sidewalks west of 38th? We've been here 50 years. I mean, seriously...
How much time do you got tonight?
Okay. Well, I'm just wondering, but also there are two schools that are off of 38th Avenue, okay? Prospect Valley, Color Stand. There are kids that walk in that street all the time. And then when you have the snow and there's nothing to shovel, they're just walking on ice. It's a safety issue. I'd like to see that a priority. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, to the point about CDOT, I had sent a email to Mr. Kevin Brown and I said I wanted to reach out to inquire about what can be done to improve snow removal and maintenance of state highways, 121 and 391 during inclement weather, specifically the inclines in the vicinity of 32nd Avenue. While I have noticed proper treatment and maintenance in years past, it appears this year in particular, there have been an increased number of crashes and closures of these highways during inclement weather. Please let me know if anything can be done to improve the maintenance of these stretches of roadways during inclement weather periods. Thank you for all you and your team do to ensure the safety of the traveling public. I appreciate it. And his response back was, "Good afternoon, Mr. Urban. My initial thought is that there have been some particularly harsh storms this year, but I'll leave this to the experts." The maintenance superintendent for Wadsworth is John Lorn and provided me his contact and then said, "The maintenance supervisor for Kipling is Jeff and his content, contact information is provided below." And then I received another email from John saying that Jeff is not the superintendent for the Kipling area, uh, but that, uh, John covers both Kipling and Wadsworth. So, as much as that there may have been some miscommunication between CDOT staff, and I'm certain that there are staff that covers, uh, Wadsworth and Kipling, that there was some miscommunication there as it relates to who's doing what. So that in and of itself is concerning. And so as a property owner in Wheat Ridge, CDOT being a property owner in Wheat Ridge, um, what would it take to issue them a citation or, uh, a summons relating to violation of whatever we decide to do? Can we cite a, another governmental agency, uh, RTD or other entities?
Hmm, I wish Mr. Dolles here. I, my gut, uh, ans, initial answer is no, cause it's their facilities, um, and we can't, I can't imagine we could regulate somebody else's facilities, right?
Right.
Um, if it ends up in our right of ways, of course, but, um, yeah.
Okay. And then, so kind of setting that aside, knowing that CDOT's not really clear on who's doing what, um, when we look at the memo that was provided to us, it says that the, currently it isn't really clear whether a violation of 1668, removal of snow and ice from sidewalks should be enforced through a municipal court system by summons or the administrative citation process. Neither system is as efficient, as effective as a parking style ticket approach. So his attorney's office is working on that. But then as we look at the section 1668, it says in part E, "Failure to remove snow, ice, sleet from sidewalks as required by this section may result in the issuance of a summons and a complaint, or the city may remove such snow or ice and assess the cost of, against the premises, abutting the sidewalk or both." So have we issued any summons or citations in relation to 1668 since it was passed?
No, but I, I'm not saying we couldn't do it. I, I agree with you. We can do it by the, by the ordinance. What I'm suggesting is that we do it in an easier way so that we can actually deal with it better. So as you can imagine, in a storm, that's when we get very, very busy and we're handling accidents and, and we're doing all, all kinds of things to come back. If we could have our, um, code enforcement officers just issue that, that simple parking summons and what better to call it, it would certainly streamline the process. And now we act on complaint and, you know, our, our goal is always to, um, solve a problem the easiest way, which is not always enforcement or strict enforcement by, by summons or court. In general, if we go and talk to property owners and say, "Hey, we need to fix this", they'll generally get fixed. If we have repeat offenders that we know about and we, and we don't get the information, um, we don't get near the information that you might see on, uh, Wheat Ridge Neighbors or one of the other things. We hear, we get, we hear a lot of things on that. Of course, we don't, as the police department, we don't really follow that. Um, we just, we get it when somebody forwards it to us and some, sometimes, uh, several of you have, have forwarded that information, so we know to look for it. But, you know, we, we're kind of counting on the public to call us, call our, our Jeffcom Dispatch Center so that we can respond to calls in a, in a timely manner. And in, in general, we don't, we don't get a lot of complaints about that. We don't get the complaints that the business, and then we, we talked about, we heard about one particular business tonight, um, we have not had a complaint fr, uh, from the public on that. So we'll respond to it and then we'll deal with it. Um, like I said, is it always a, a time for a summons or not? And can we handle a situation? A lot of times we don't have to do that, so...
Well, I guess as it relates to having city staff going around looking for instances where someone hasn't done what they should have done, if they have time to do that, they have time to shovel it or have time to fix it, then I, I don't want to get in a situation where we're proactively prowling the streets to find violators of this because you could do that right now as it's snowing because it stopped snowing. And how long does it have to stop snowing before the new storm is considered a new storm and the old storm is over because now it, you know, after the meeting, I'll have to go home and, and shovel what fell yesterday and then in 24 hours do it again? Or what happens if I do it, you know, proactively in 12 hours, but then it snows again? But they're different storms. And, uh, I guess the other concern, because this is sort of a, if you give a mouse a cookie type situation, um, the ordinance has currently stated, says it snows more than two inches. So do we have any kind of, uh, official weather station in Wheat Ridge that we rely on to say it has snowed 2.5 inches or it has snowed, uh, six inches or how do we define that?
You know, I think all, a lot of, most of this would be based on discretion of the officer.
Well, sure.
Yeah. And, and honestly, uh, Mr. Urban too, if, if, even if we wanted to send everybody out, staff out and, and look for these instances, we don't, we don't have the staff for that.
Right.
I mean, that's something we can do. If council thinks this is a priority, we could, we'd have to resource up, uh, if we wanted to be more proactive with this, but we don't have the staff to go out and shovel, shovel walks or even, even identify it really.
Sure. Um, so I would just say that as the ordinance stands, we have enforcement capabilities, but we haven't used them and there is some arguments we made as to whether the, uh, ticket process would work better, but I think that we should go forward with what we already have to, to enforce what we already have when we receive a complaint, not going out and looking for situations where we could issue a complaint. And the snow buddy program, it sounds all well and good that we're gonna encourage everybody else to go out and shovel everybody else's walk. And I, uh, several years ago created a Wheat Ridge Snow Shovel Brigade and it fell apart because everybody's busy shoveling their own stuff and then getting on with their own business. It just, it feels good, but it doesn't actually pan out or shovel out, as it were. Um, so it, it feels good to say we're gonna have that, but, um, I think our priorities are in the commercial corridors and when we're going around to businesses and telling them, "You need to get your stuff together," and they're looking at CDOT and CDOT doesn't have their stuff together, it makes it a little bit hard for us to be that enforcer. And so, um, I just, I think we already have this ordinance in place. We need to enforce it where we need to, but, um, the, the programs that are available, we should push those. We should encourage residents to help each other, but regulating neighbors helping each other isn't gonna get more neighbors to help each other. We just need to encourage that as we are. So I, I think that the enforcement should be done, but, um, I don't see that we need to do anything more.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree actually with a lot of what Mr. Urban just said. I think the programmatic aspects are hard enough. The city takes them on and, you know, dedicates staff to it. Uh, that is a lot different than trying to manage it through, through Facebook. So, um, I would like the, the assistance programs either to, you know, be something that's considered as part of the neighborhood engagement program and figure out at the neighborhood level, um, or along with the sustainability neighborhoods program that the city's looking at where it's a social, um, social capital type of program. Um, but right now I agree, the, the priority is enforcing what we have on the commercial corridors. As far as the orphan segments, I think where we run into some difficulties are not where the commercial corridor is a front yard for a resident, but where it's the backyard, which is specifically those stretches on 44th Avenue. Um, and I think maybe that is a place where the city has been taking care of those, those orphan stretches. And I don't know if there is any type of agreement in place with the, the property owners in the city that, um, may help with the liability issue there. Um, but I agree, I think the sidewalks are very inconsistent in the city and, and the consideration of trying to, you know, take on some sort of shoveling regime for such an erratic built environment is, is quite a lift. So, but my experience, like Judy, having audited those corridors is that most of the business owners actually are in compliance and it's just a couple of outliers that really actually are the issues. So I think starting with an outreach and education that, you know, starting next winter, that this is gonna be enforced and get ready for it and it's a reminder and, and on you. I think there's actually not gonna be that much enforcement and probably most people only need one enforcement. Um, so I don't know if there's like an escalation, cause you know, one enforcement usually is like a, "Hey, you need to get this done" and a second is like, "This might be a problem" and a third is maybe where the, the abatement comes in. But, um, I think, I don't think it is as big of a lift as, as it needs to be if we don't go into the neighborhoods and just really focus on that enforcement. I agree the ticketing and not the code enforcement, because you can't come back 10 days later when we're talking about melting snow, cause it might be twice as bad, so, or gone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
I'm gonna try to find a consensus to move forward with. I'd like to ask a consensus that, um, we continue to work on the education piece that was outlined in the memo. We pause the assistance piece that was outlined in the memo and work on these pieces in the enforcement. As far as continue to work towards finding a ticket style approach, understanding that it may require changes to 1668, continue to look for abandoned areas where we may potentially be able to help as a city and to focus only proactively on the commercial areas and reactively in the neighborhoods, but proactively on the commercial areas when they are egregious and have not, um, have not done anything with their snow. So I'd like to ask for a consensus for that. Oh, Zach's got one more.
Question, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, can we add something on there to tell CDOT to get their act together?
And we'd like to send a memo to CDOT to tell them, "Please help our community."
We appreciate everything that they do to help keep our traveling public safe and we appreciate the work they're doing, but we all have areas where we can improve on and their areas are Wadsworth and Kipling.
I'd like to ask for a consensus for this.
Okay, so do we have a consensus?
Ms. Hoppy, do you have that written down?
Yes.
Okay.
What happened here? Computer died.
You went too fast.
Does that give you the information that you're looking for in order to, um...
Yeah, I, I think it's the next step. Yep. We'll start there.
Until we can afford to put, uh, heating coils under the sidewalks?
Yes. Or, uh... Yes.
Could we heat the coils under the sidewalks?
Well, until we can, then we're going to have to, you know, shovel. Okay. Well, thank you very much for, uh, bringing that forward. We will now move to agenda item number two. This is the 44th Avenue Historic Barn update and I understand that, uh, Ms. Schilling has got a presentation for us?
She does. Uh, we have, um, Marianne Schilling here, um, our Assistant to the City Manager, and Zach Lovato also with our parks, um, are both here, and Ken Johnstone also, um, who's been part of this. So we'll turn it over to Marianne.
Good evening. I'm Marianne Schilling, Assistant to the City Manager. Um, I'm here to talk about the 44th Avenue Historic Barn. All right, so the agenda tonight, we're gonna do a barn overview. I know we have some new council members since it was last addressed in June. Um, we're gonna go over the previous council actions, discuss options moving forward and then open it up for discussion. So first for the barn overview, we're gonna go over the location, the designation, and then its current condition. For the location, you can see that it is, um, 44th Avenue. The address is 11480 West 44th. It's between Tabor and Robb Street. Um, it's about, what do I have? Um, 300 feet south of 44th and then 200 feet north of Prospect Lake. The property is about an acre in size and it's just, the barn itself is just under 600 square feet. You can see it's just in the southeast corner of the property there. For the history of the barn, um, it was originally owned by James Baugh, obviously a historical figure for the city of Wheat Ridge. Um, the barn was believed to be an improvement to the land in the late 1880s. The, the, um, original designation documentations on the case file doesn't have specific evidence of the exact date, but based on the, um, the construction on there, it seems to be about the 1880s. Um, it was later owned by George Williams, the direct descendant of Joy Williams, who is the namesake of the barn and who is the one who brought it for designation. Um, according to the case file, it's about 30 to 35 feet high. The first floor ceiling is about 12 feet high with a single room. The second floor is a loft with access to the external door and stairs. Uh, we did get this from the case file because there is a lock on the, the door on the bottom of the, the barn, right at the, the bottom entrance, the property owner doesn't have the key. So, um, this is our, our estimate on the, what the inside looks like and then also based on the pictures that she provided originally. That was included in the staff report. Um, the, it was designated because the frame construction is believed to be post and lintel supporting a gambrel pitch roof. And, um, as a standalone structure, the barn does emulate a period in which farming and ranching was common in the Wheat Ridge area. This is the current condition of the barn. was common in the Wheat Ridge area. This is the current condition of the barn. It is in a dilapidated condition. It, not being a, a personal barn expert, it does seem to be needing some roofwork, and the stairs and that, the deck outside does need some work as well. We're not, as I said, able to get on the inside of it, so we couldn't speak to the inside of its current condition. For the previous city council actions, in 1998 is when it was locally designated, the Joy Williams barn, it was believed to be the local improvement to the land in the 1880s. It was designated as a, designated locally, so it wasn't designated on a state or federal registry, and it was, the process under case number WHL 9801, and it was passed by ordinance. Okay. In June 2019, the property owner requested the removal of the designation. She primarily requested this because in 2013 is when she bought the property, and she wasn't made aware by the title company or the previous owner that it was a historically designated barn. So she came, had a public hearing to ask for a removal of that designation. At that time, she, the Wheat Ridge Historical Society, and some members of the public came and spoke upon the property, and at the end, city council decided they failed the designation, the motion to remove the designation failed due to a lack of a second motion. So after the meeting, former council member Larry Matthews did reach out to staff and asked that we work with the property owner to figure out some sort of a reasonable conclusion for this property and for the barn, and so that's why we are here today. Staff has worked with all of the parties, which includes the owner, the Wheat Ridge Historical Society, additional staff, and then also the State of Colorado Historic Society, to see if we could come up with some reasonable options. Here are the four options that we have. So reconsider the removal of the historic designation, pursue historic structure assessment grant, consider pursuit of property acquisition by the city, and then no action. And then, as Mr. Goff said, we do have Ken Johnstone and Zach Lovato here, who can speak to an additional detail regarding some of this once we're finished with the presentation. So for removal of the historic designation, this is to say that the property was eligible for the removal of the designation in June. Nothing has changed with the property in the meantime, so it is still eligible for the removal of the designation. If that is something that council would like to consider, then the property owner would apply again for designation, for removal of the designation, and then staff would create a, a resolution to return to council or an ordinance. For the pursuit of the historic structure assessment grant, this is something that's awarded by the State of Colorado, and it reports on the physical condition of the historic, of a historic building or structure. So typically, these include cost estimates, and they're classified as well, which includes if they're critical, the seriousness of the nature, and the minor deficiencies, which can be nice because it can help for staff regarding their timing and budgeting purposes for any sort of rehabilitation that they like to do. The HSA in total, if we were to receive the grant, it takes about a year to complete from start to finish. And the city did receive this grant before with the Fruitdale property in 2011, and they did find it to be useful in order to give direction on the action to, to do moving forward regarding the rehabilitation of the property. This is essentially what the state calls a no strings attached grant, so we could receive the grant, go through the assessment, and doesn't require that we do anything in any sort of order, that we do anything at all. It's a report that we are basically getting a grant to create. So that could be nice because it's something that the city could receive the grant and then revisit and decide what actions might make sense at that time. For the total funding amount for this grant, the amount that we'd be requesting is $10,000, and then an additional $5,000 is optional, depending on if we want to have an expert contractor help us with the evaluation. So that would be an architect or an engineer typically. There is a 50% match required by the city in order to do that. So, but the being owned not by the city and by private property owner, the 50% match is required compared to the Fruitdale HSA, which did not require a city match because the housing authority owned the property at the time. Additionally, when we wrote the Fruitdale grant, we did use the services of Colorado Preservation, Inc. They're, they're the ex-subject matter expert in the grant writing process. It's a very technical grant application. If you'd like to see it, it's, it's very thorough. And so we would likely, if we were to pursue this, we would likely use our services again, which would be about $1,500. So the total funding request, if we were to pursue the historic structure assessment grant, would be up to $9,000. It wouldn't necessarily be the $15,000 asking, so based upon working with Colorado Preservation, we would have an idea of if we should request the maximum amount, or if there'd be any less that we should, that we should be applying for. The third option is to pursue the property acquisition by the city of Wheat Ridge. The reason is, is really due to the proximity to Prospect Park. You can see down south the Prospect Lake. So this would be an option that the city could pursue regardless of if the barn was still designated historically. So something to consider is that we can do a couple of these options at once potentially. So you could remove the historic designation, and then you could also pursue acquisition. Additionally, you could pursue acquisition and then also do the historic structure assessment grant. And you don't necessarily have to do them at the same time. You don't have to, you could do one at a time. So it's really up to city council to, to get a feel on what they'd like to do with these options, and then give direction moving forward. You can see on the map on the south and the west side, there is the west adjacent property, which kind of is between the, the barn property and then Prospect Lake. If the city were to pursue the acquisition of the, of the property with the barn, it would be contingent on purchasing at least a portion of that property, the west adjacent property, in order for it to fully connect to Prospect Park. So if we were to consider the acquisition and we could not get the west adjacent property portion, then it would diminish the, the value of that property, seeing that it wouldn't connect to Prospect Park. So another thing to consider if we were to pursue the property acquisition and then also the HSA, is that when the city owns a property, the matching portion for future grant acquisitions or grant applications is reduced. So as a private property, if we were to pursue the HSA, and then similar to Fruitdale, then we request additional funds from the, the State of Colorado. As of right now, with us not owning the property, we would have a 50% match, but if we did own the property, it would only be a 25% match, so it would be a cost savings. So if we were to pursue this, the consensus that, if we had consensus, our next steps would be to work with Ms. McIntyre, the owner of the property, on negotiations, and then also to reach out to the other property owner, the west adjacent property. And then we would return with a detailed proposal regarding the cost and plans for the barn, the adjacent property, and then estimated costs and funding opportunities. And then, of course, you may decide to take no action tonight. There's no obligation of the city to take action on this private property, so it'd be something for you all to consider, based on what, whatever makes more sense to you all. The owner has emailed city council to let them know that she's worked with staff and that she's supportive of the options tonight, specifically the pursuit of the historic structure assessment grant and the pursuit of the property acquisition by the city. Tonight, we're really looking for a direction to dive into, not necessarily the, the end of the line. So keep that in mind, that we can, we can pursue in several directions at once as well. So at this time, we will open the floor for discussion, and then hope to receive consensus moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Open it up for questions from council. Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank, thank you, you guys, for working, to the staff for working with this property owner on this. The thing about the barn is that we don't have a lot of historical structures in Wheat Ridge, and a lot of that is because we were incorporated late, and by the time, you know, we did get incorporated, a lot of them were already demolished and something else was built in that space. And so I think it's important to try to save what we can. However, for me, I don't feel like any of these options are really great options until we know if the barn's worth anything. And so as I look at this, it's like, I would like to know, is the, if, if the barn is worth saving, and it's something that we can, that we can save and keep in our community, then I think it's something we should. If there is really no saving it from where it's at, and the Historical Society has said that they would repurpose the, the barn and over by the Baw House, and it would be part of, you know, the, the little area that they have already with a couple of different historical pieces from our community, then I think that'd be great too. But for me, I can't really say pursue purchasing the property because we might want to keep the barn on it if the barn is no good. So in my personal opinion, I would like to see us pursue the historic structural assessment grant, and some people may say that it's not worth the $9,000, but I do certainly think it's worth the $9,000 to see if we can save a, a piece of history in our community. And we did a really good job with the, with the pump house and working with Denver Water there, and I'd like to see us be able to save something else if it's, if it's worth it. So that's just kind of where I'm at.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with Councilmember Hoppe in that the $10,000, yes, it seems rather expensive to end up figuring out that the barn isn't worth saving, but really that $10,000 is payment to the prior council that made the decision of the designation, and if we are to consider at some point in the future removing that designation, this payment of $10,000 in this study that would, you know, come forth from that would give us the, the ability to justifiably, you know, make the decision one way or the other as it relates to removing that. I, you know, at this point, I wouldn't agree with removing the designation. I think this is a good way for us to go forward to make that decision. Yes, it is expensive, but like you said, if we have that ability to save a structure, that is something that I think we need to pursue, if only to recognize and respect prior council decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to agree with councilman Hoppe and councilmember, or councilmember Urban. I think that the $10,000, or if we decide to make it $15,000, is probably worth it just to make sure that it is something that it's worth either saving or letting go of, and that's certainly a lot more money to just purchase the property outright and hope, and hope's never a good strategy. So I, I would definitely be in favor of, of pursuing that grant and, and going forward that way, and then we can kind of make that final decision after we get the, the findings from that.
Ms. Schilling, I had a question. In the historic structures assessment, would there be a, a cost factor for how much it would take to relocate the barn? Would that be, or how would we come up with, with sort of that evaluation? Would that be part of that?
The relocation portion would not be part of the scope of work for the HSA.
Okay. Have, have we done any work on, any guesstimates on what it would take to relocate the?
I have not done a guesstimate, but I've received a wild estimate that could be up to $400,000. I don't know if that's accurate. I think that was a number maybe come up with by the Historic Society.
Come to a...
Thank you, sir. I'm Bonnie Botham, B-O-T-H-A-M, and I'm Secretary of the Wheat Ridge Historical Society, and we're certainly aware of the beauty of keeping some of our history alive. What, what is true about this particular property is that its accessibility is, is, it's difficult to get to. I mean, there is a driveway, and then the, but then the lake is immediately behind it, but it is city property back there, though. So if the city could, you know, refurbish it and make it a, a park-like edifice there, that'd be great. The Historical Society has the Baw House property, and it's large enough to have a barn on that property. I do have photographs on my phone of the interior. We were able to get in there last summer and look around, and after that, we had a fairly large meeting of probably, I would say, 25% of our total membership, which is a pretty good turnout, because most of them are just on paper members. And the decision was, while we, it would be lovely to fight for this, what is the reality of, of the, what we want to do in the next five years? In the next five years, the Wheat Ridge Historical Society is going to work on the Baw House further to make it a really exciting place for people to come and see what life was like in the 1860s, have gardens, and we need to have public restrooms, et cetera, things that, like that. That's on our five-year plan. We are going to work with the Parks and Recreation Department and see if we can't make that, because of its accessibility, the focus of our enthusiasm and, and membership at this time. I don't know how else better to say it. The barn designation was made by the city decades ago during the Joy Williams ownership time, I believe, and while it'd be sad to, to see that go, if it does go, we are so excited to reclaim the, the structure itself. It is a concrete first story. It's concrete walls up to probably 10, 15 feet, or more than that, whatever a normal ceiling is, and then wood, big four-by-fours and six-by-sixes beams up to a very high, I mean, if you've seen it, the, the aspect that we had, it may not show you just how big it is. You said it was 6,000, 600 square feet? I think it's bigger than that, but, but, you know, it's hard to tell. But it's right now full of cages and things like that. They had a, a bird's sanctuary possibility going on there at one time, but...
Mr. Mayor, maybe to answer your question too, on the assessment grant, probably can't tell you what it would cost to move it, but I think it, hopefully will tell us if it can be moved or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll be able to tell us that, hopefully.
I have a comment about moving of the structure as well. I'm not a structural engineer, but I did stay at Holiday Inn Express last night, so, you know, just my basic assessment is what, what makes that barn unique is that, that the concrete first story, that the, the concrete itself is historic. The aggregate in that concrete is made from cobble from Clear Creek. You don't see that anywhere. But what also makes it unique is, is part of what I think would be almost impossible to move that barn. I don't think, number one, that concrete is probably very, very heavy. Number two, because that aggregate is so big, it would likely vibrate and shake loose, even if we drive it a couple of blocks. Beyond that, if you could find somebody who could weather that, you will have some costs with shutting down part of the power grid for a short period of time, because you would have to drop the power lines on 44th Avenue. So all of that together, I think is, would be a huge feat, and, and you may not be successful getting it over there. So you kind of, in my mind, if you want to keep the integrity of the barn as, as it sits, is it would have to most likely stay where it's at.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I was raised in a family that spent a lot of its effort restoring historic buildings downtown, so I really appreciate our ability as a city to preserve our heritage. Looking at the options, I agree, the, the assessment, especially since the owner has expressed that she supports it, I think that the cost associated with that is, is actually not that significant. To me, it's a consideration of the time also. So it says that it takes up to a year for that, once it's awarded. If, if we're pursuing that in partnership with the, with the owner, I want to make sure that we're using that time well, as well. If we're going to be looking at, at what it costs to, you know, is it preservable, what the possible cost would be, can we move it? I think to also make sure we're looking at, once we get that news, what do we do with it? You know, I'm, I'm not sure as a city, you know, what we would do with the barn, and we don't need to know that now, but if we are going to be moving forward with those options on the table. I don't know if anyone has, has talked to, it sounds like you guys haven't talked to the, the property owners. The, it's, it's weird, right, because there's the property to the west that is right on 44th, and then it's a separate pop, property owner that kind of L-shaped wraps around it. Is that correct? Has anyone looked at, actually... Has anyone looked at, actually, if the city were to purchase it, severing the barn and letting the owner keep the land to the north of the barn, and then the city would just acquire the strip from the barn to Prospect Lake to make that small extension? Is that something that has been considered or a possibility?
We haven't really, in any serious way, explored what the acquisitions would be. I think our observation has been, kind of regardless of whether the status of the structure, is it historic? Is it salvageable? What are those costs? Is that a cost that some entity is willing to absorb? I think our observation has been that we believe, and Mr. Lovato can speak to this perhaps better than I, that the two properties in combination, the L-shaped property that you refer to and Sanders' property, could have value and purpose as a kind of an expansion of Prospect Park. I think we would like the fact that there's frontage on 44th in terms of visibility into the park, and I think dimensionally, having those two properties in a little more rectangular shape and a little more regular shape to it, plus the direct connectivity to the park, would what would add park value. So we do think there's kind of a separate decision point for tonight or another night as to whether we should pursue one or both of those properties, and it would be our recommendation, again, that it probably makes sense only both of them. But that would be a separate decision point for you tonight if you're ready to take action on that.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone know if she's been actually trying to market the property or what the current status is of it?
It's not listed with a broker. She certainly is interested in disposing of it. I mean, she has no use for the property, right? She bought it to be helpful to this wild bird rescue group, and that wild bird rescue group does not have the resources to use this property. So they had a lease on the property for a period of time, and that lease has expired some time ago. So she's looking to dispose of the property in one form or fashion. She, you know, has expressed interest in transacting with the city, but we've not pursued that in any significant way, lacking, obviously, council's direction.
So would she be able to market the property concurrently with us doing the landmark study, or would she be obliged to keep the property off the market while we're doing that study?
I think the challenge is the property doesn't have much market value right now, right?
Because of the barn?
Because of the barn designation and the liability associated with it as well.
I'd also like to add that if we were to pursue the historic structure assessment grant, it would require her signature and a letter of support as well, so a little bit of a buy-in on her end.
Additional discussion?
I'd like to make a consensus.
Ms. Hoppe?
I just have, and you had said that, she said she does support pursuing the historical structure assessment. Thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a consensus that we pursue a historic structural assessment grant up to an amount of $15,000. Not to spend the $15,000, because we can't do that in the study session.
All right, well, we seem to have consensus to pursue a historic structures assessment. Does that give you the appropriate direction you need? Okay, thank you so much. Those were the two items on our study session. We'll go to Mr. Goff for a staff report.
Nothing else this evening, thank you.
Are there any elected officials matters that anyone would like to bring up? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we would all agree, if we thought about it for a minute, we each have a favorite constituent, and I would like to wish my favorite constituent a happy 13th anniversary. Love you, baby. Bye.
Okay. Are there, Ms. Dozeman? Let's see what you've got.
I can't believe I have to follow that. I just wanted to say that Councilwoman Noster Beck sent her apologies for her needing to leave early. She was really not feeling well, and she just wanted to give a friendly reminder for everybody to wash their hands.
Thank you. I'm glad we didn't need to take a whole shower, but, and, you know, in light of Mr. Urban's well wishes to his spouse, I would like to wish mine a very happy Valentine's Day, which is coming up, and I hope that our city is full of a lot of love. I know it is, because we're a great place to live. So if there be no further business before the council, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, and we will not see you next week on Monday.